We will be led in invocation tonight by Councilor Matthew Kelly, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand if you are able.
Most merciful Father, bring peace to those in distress, bring comfort to those in pain. Please protect our men and women in uniform, both home and abroad, and bring them home safely to their families. Help us to make decisions that benefit all our residents of the city of Fredericksburg, and always remind us that we are here to serve and not be served. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have several presentations tonight, but the first is to honor Clarence Robinson, our Director of Fiscal Affairs, for thirty-two years of service to the city of Fredericksburg. If the City Manager, Mr. Barudy and Mr. Whitley will join me, we will come forward.
And Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. You know, ever since I've been on the council, when I go around the state and go to meetings and tell people I'm from Fredericksburg or I'm on the City Council of Fredericksburg, the answer is almost always the same. Oh, Fredericksburg, a well-managed city. And truly, that is the reputation Fredericksburg has had for a long time in the state of Virginia. And this gentleman standing beside me is one of the reasons, by far. We are very proud of the fiscal stability of our city and how well we have managed over the years through some pretty lean times. And Clarence, you've had a lot to do with that, and we thank you very much. Proclamation. Whereas Clarence A. Robinson was hired by the city of Fredericksburg on July 21st, 1986, and will retire from the city of Fredericksburg on June 30th, 2018, representing thirty-two years of dedicated service. And whereas during that time, Clarence A. Robinson has served the city of Fredericksburg as Director of Fiscal Affairs. And whereas Clarence A. Robinson has worked tirelessly to provide sound fiscal administration and guidance to the city of Fredericksburg. And whereas Clarence A. Robinson has been instrumental in the city of Fredericksburg receiving the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for twenty-eight consecutive years, which recognizes the accomplishment of transparency and full disclosure in annual financial reporting. And whereas Clarence A. Robinson has been a dedicated leader of the city of Fredericksburg, Virginia's Department of Fiscal Affairs. Clarence A. Robinson has represented the city with a high level of professionalism and knowledge. Clarence A. Robinson is highly regarded and known throughout the city of Fredericksburg for his accounting expertise, high standards, and dedication to helping others. Now therefore, I, Mary Catherine Greenlaw, Mayor of the city of Fredericksburg, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Fredericksburg, on this twenty-sixth day of June in the year 2018, do hereby thank and congratulate Clarence A. Robinson for his dedicated contributions to the city and extend to him and his family the very best wishes for continued success and happiness with future endeavors. Before I call on our City Manager and our Assistant City Manager, there is someone much more eloquent than I and sassier to boot who would like to say something, Mrs. Marguerite Young.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Members of the city's staff, citizens of Fredericksburg here in the audience, and to those in TV land, as my brother Weldon Bailey used to say when he was on council, good evening. I came tonight to get my pack-a-pat on the back. You see, one of my former students is retiring at the end of this month, and I came to witness your recognition of my work. That's over fifty years ago. And now, citizens of Fredericksburg, that comment is a tongue-in-cheek. But you just heard the kind of work that Clarence A. Robinson has done all these years. And he has not turned me loose, and I have not turned him loose. And I want you to know, he's my student. Thank you.
You have just heard from one of the most powerful voices in the city of Fredericksburg, a lady for whom I have enormous respect.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna have Mr. Whitley do the honors in just a moment. But I did want to say, first of all, job well done, Ms. Young. I do appreciate your family, Clarence, for giving you to the city for thirty-two years. I know the city has taken you away from them on occasion. Now it's time to make up for lost time. I appreciate your moral compass, your ethical standards, your good mentorship of me, and quite frankly, your patience with me. You've been a good friend to me and to the city of Fredericksburg. And more importantly, back to the Mayor's proclamation, you've been a strong steward of taxpayer dollars for all these years. So thank you for all that. It's very meaningful, and don't be a stranger. Appreciate your time.
Clarence, I'm sorry to drag this out a little bit, but I do want to just say a word. This actually can be hard. One of the things that folks in finance have to do is they have to wrestle with kind of a language of strange words. And all of us kind of have an idea what they are, but they deal with it on an everyday basis. Things like assets and liabilities and equity and fund balance and expenditures and revenues. And what does all this even mean? Well, here's a quick thumbnail of the word asset, something that has value or adds value. Well, let me tell y'all, let me tell everybody that the service of Mr. Robinson for thirty-two years has been nothing but a huge asset to the city of Fredericksburg for this whole time. He took over this finance function at a time when it was... A different time. The city was struggling. And he helped put it on the right path. I think it's twenty-eight years of cappers that had gotten a GFOA award speaks just volumes about what he's been able to accomplish. Couldn't do it alone. He has built a tremendous team and has had a tremendous team over the years in fiscal affairs. And I won't steal a thunder, but they're there in the back. Much love and appreciation to all of y'all. The support of a great family. Thank you so much for sharing him with us all these years. We've been truly blessed to have him as our Director of Fiscal Affairs. I personally have been truly blessed to have Clarence as a mentor and a friend. He has taught me so much about municipal government, municipal finance. And if you don't have a good Clarence saying, you haven't been paying attention. So... But more importantly than that, about life. I want to say thank you. I want to wish you best wishes for a long and happy retirement filled with joy and peace. And as our old friend, Mr. Cameron, would say, now that you don't need to know what time it is, the city is very happy to present you with this watch.
Thank you. If I'd known I would get as many friendly, positive, nice things said about me, I would have retired much earlier. I enjoyed this. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Assistant City Manager. I didn't accomplish this task independently. I'm very blessed to have a solid family. And if you would just bear with me for a moment, I'm gonna work out a little something to show you how strong my network really has been. With my immediate family, bar one, please stand. Oh, she didn't listen again, see? Okay. Would my very close friends and my next... Or actually, my extended family, please stand. Keep working. If you're considering yourself a friend of me, would you please stand? Is that broad enough for you? So now, the other side of this is, with the department heads, you know, I can't do anything to your budget, but if you're still in there, would you stand, please? Okay. So when you talk about the accomplishment... You can have a seat, I'm good. When you talk about the accomplishment... I'm gonna turn the light back on me. When you talk about the accomplishment, it's about the network and about the support. And I can't tell you how exciting it has been as I go through the pile of material and I find little shades of reminisc... I reminisce and I, wow, we did this, we did this, that and the other. It was never accomplished independently. I've had a fantastic experience. I've had great mentoring, as my mentor would attest to. If you think... You only heard a tip of it. You know, I was... Mark, I wanted you to see. I was at an activity that saluted Mrs. Young's ninetieth birthday earlier in the week. And I wrote out my comments. I was ready. I had practiced, practiced, practiced. And then when you get it in your court, I was like so glad to finish because, you know, you can't go through those kinds of experiences. And I felt like, wow, I'm a seventy-year-old man still getting emotional about my ninety-year-old teacher. Whoa, she never turns away this power. She always has control, you know? But it was just a fantastic activity. I'm just so blessed to have such people as Mrs. Young, Johnny Johnson. Those of you who know Johnny P., you'll see the mural soon. He is another, you know... He taught my class. I was in the sixth grade when he came to Fredericksburg, and he taught our class. And another of our classmates, who is no longer with us, John Scott, he used to joke. Scotty was his lawyer, and I was his accountant. I'm still doing his taxes and other things. I used to get paintings, and he says to me now, you have too many already. I'm not gonna give you anymore. But I won't labor this. I just want everyone to know I'm totally at peace with this. I'm excited about the next step. And see what I mean? Thank you very much.
We are very pleased to recognize tonight Mr. Ryland Brand, the Partnership Specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau. And I will call upon our Community Development Planner, Susanna Finn, for an explanation of our part in the Census Complete Count.
Good evening. So the 2020 census is now only two years away. And not only is it not too soon to start planning, we have already started planning. At a federal level, census data determines the number of seats for the House of Representatives. At the state level, Virginia will use the data to determine legislative districts. And at a local level, census data will directly influence future changes to ward boundaries. The data collected in the census also helps to determine the distribution of annual federal funding across many programs. The Planning Services Division is preparing for this decennial census by completing the Local Update of Census Addresses, LUCA, in 2018. And in 2019, we will participate in an update to Census Track Block boundaries to best represent our recent development in local geography. To ensure that Fredericksburg is accurately represented in the 2020 census, education and engagement activities will need to be planned. A Complete Count Committee will lead these efforts to prepare the Fredericksburg community to participate in the census. This committee is made up of community leaders, civic and faith-based organizations, media representatives, and members of the school system and various government departments. City Council will formally endorse this effort and establish this committee later this summer. But Ronald Brown, Partnership Specialist, is our local contact with the U.S. Census Bureau and will advise us as we assemble our Complete Count Committee and prepare the community for Census Day, April 1, 2020. Mr. Brown is here this evening, as well as his partners from the census to offer his expertise as we begin our effort. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Ms. Finn. Madam Mayor, City Manager, Members of Council, thank you for having me this evening to talk about the 2020 census and to talk about the Complete Count Committee. Let me first share with you, I had hoped to be able to catch Mr. Robinson before he left because with everyone he had here, I'm gonna hold him accountable for counting every single one of them when we get into April 1st, 2020 Census Day. I understand we have a PowerPoint that we can share...
Computer, please.
Well, yes, I'm here on behalf of the U.S. Census Bureau to talk about the 2020 census and how it impacts the community and some of the things that will be occurring, some of the challenges we have ahead of us as it relates to not only the community but also to the Census Bureau. The 2020 census is about counting everyone in America. And when we say everyone, we mean everyone. Not only citizens, but those who are documented and undocumented. And why do we do that? Because people are using services throughout our communities, whether it's the educational system that our children go to, whether it's the hospitals, whether it's just the roadways people are getting up and down on. Everyone is using them, so we need to make sure we're counting everyone. What are we gonna be doing? What we have to do is make sure we're counting everyone once and only once and in the right place. So that's why we have a LUCA program that you are engaged in to help us look a local update of census addresses. In the past, you have provided us with addresses to make sure that when we send out the census form in March of 2020, that we can make sure we're sending it to the right location and the individual will receive it and be able to fill out that census form and get it back to us. But again, we're not sure we have the right addresses. So that's why we're working closely with you to review the list we have to make sure we have the right addresses. We received information from 2010, but that's ten years ago. And we need to make sure as communities have changed, as new subdivisions have gone up, how some apartments have become uninhabited, no one any longer living there, we need to make sure we have the correct addresses. We need to make sure we're engaging the community to return their census form when they receive it. Now, in 2000, Fredericksburg had a 71% response rate to the mail-out forms we sent and those that were mailed back. In 2010, it stayed at 71%. Again, the forms we mailed out and the ones we received back. We're hoping for 2020, we can increase that because again, there are some significant impacts that it has based on the population count. One of those impacts is congressional representation. Who represents us in Congress is based on the population of our state. So we have right now a number of individuals there, and we don't want to lose them. And we don't want another state to gain them. I was part of the team in Charlotte, North Carolina for 2010. And South Carolina lost one as congressional representatives because their population went down. But we don't want that to happen here in Virginia. Virginia in 2000 had a 73% mail-back response rate. In 2010, that went up three points to 76%. We want to make sure we continue to go up, and we want Fredericksburg to increase over what they did in 2010. What I have put in your folders is a couple of sheets that will better explain what is going on with the 2020 census. The first one on the left side of your folder is called the 2020 at a glance. It tells you exactly the steps we're looking to engage, not only looking at the addresses we need to have on file, but also motivating people to respond. And that's what the Complete Count Committee will be engaged in, looking at ways to get the community involved, looking at how to craft a message so people understand the importance of the census, and creating events, creating activities that will again engage the population to become involved. We will count the population, April 1st, 2020 Census Day. We will be sending out information prior to that to let everybody know it's coming. But we want to make sure they understand when they receive their form to get it back to us as soon as possible. Tremendous change from 2010. We're gonna be doing things differently. One of the things we're gonna be doing is we're gonna ask people to fill out their census form online. We've never done that before, but we're promoting that heavily. We think it will be easier for people to be able to do that. It will be quicker to get their responses in. It will be cost-effective to have that happen. But there's a challenge associated with that. We recognize that there's a digital divide, that there are a lot of people who may not have access to getting online, to being able to go on the internet to fill out a census form. So we're putting plans in place to work with Fredericksburg to give them the access to be able to go online and do that. One of the things we're doing is working with the public library. They have computers there to be able to set aside times when people get their census form to be able to go to the library and fill them out. We're working with colleges and universities that we know have computer labs, Mary Washington, to be able to again give access to citizens to be able to go and fill out their census form. We're working with local public education. We know high schools, middle schools around the states do have computer labs. I was an educator and administrator in the Henrango Public School Systems prior to coming back to work for the Census Bureau. Each of the students within their school system had either a laptop or tablet. And they will also have them for 2020. So we're asking them to allow parents to utilize those tools to be able to fill out their census form so that we can overcome that digital divide. But we're still asking people if they can't do it online, to mail them back to us. That's okay, as long as you get that information into us. We will also have toll-free numbers available for people to call. And if they're having any difficulty filling out their census form or need to do it by phone, they'll be able to do that. But that's different than what we've done in 2010 or in 2000. Changes we need to communicate to the citizens of our communities that these things are occurring, and we want to make sure you are responding to the count. What happens when we do that count? By December 31st, 2020, we have to release the numbers to the President of the United States, sharing with him how the population has changed across the country. And then in the first quarter of 2021, we are sharing the numbers with the governors, state legislators, to again show how things have changed within their areas. Our census goal, again, as I mentioned, is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. We're maximizing our outreach efforts to do everything we possibly can. That's why we're working with you to continue to maximize that outreach effort. And let's see if this PowerPoint is working. There we go. The purpose of the census is to conduct a count of the population across America. The census was developed in 1790. Guess who our first census director was? Thomas Jefferson, right here from Virginia. We take that information into the school system. That's part of history. That's something that students should know. So we're working with them to get census in the schools, to share with students how important the census is. We're also using students for a very important reason. Sometimes they're our key salespeople. If you know anything about children, you let them get hold of something, they won't let their parents let go until it is done. So we're telling them about the census and the forms that will be coming out so that they stay on their parents to make sure it gets filled out and more importantly, that they are counted. Children, too often, are a major part of the undercount whenever we do a decennial. And we want to make sure we address that and we're counting everyone within that household. Confidentiality and privacy. There's a big concern right now about whether the census data will remain confidential and private. And we're telling everyone, yes. There's a big question going on about now that they have said that there will be a citizenship question on the census form. And a lot of people are saying they're not gonna fill out that census form because of that. We cannot share anyone's personal identifiable information with anyone, president, any law enforcement agencies, ICE, or anyone. We only share aggregate numbers about how the population has changed, nothing else. It has to remain confidential. We, as Census Bureau employees, have taken the oath that we will not share that information with anyone for a risk of having to spend five years in jail or pay a $250,000 fine or both. And my wife has already told me I only have five years to give to her, and that $250,000 is for our retirement. So I cannot share information, and that's for the rest of my life, whether I am working for the Census Bureau or not. That information remains private and confidential. There are laws that have protected... People have gone to court to try to get information from the Census Bureau, and they have lost. The court has upheld that census information is confidential and private, and it's going to stay that way. Also in your folder, you will see a map about the city of Fredericksburg on the right-hand side of your folder. It shows you the low response rates for the city of Fredericksburg. The darker the color means the more work we have to do, means those response numbers, low-response numbers, hard-to-reach populations are high in those tracks. And as part of the Complete Count Committee's task is to look at how to address reaching those populations to ensure that they are responding to the census count and sending in their census forms. So there's a lot of head for Fredericksburg. But let me share with you, Fredericksburg compared to other places around the state, you have the lead. You can be the model for what others do. You've already taken the first step being part of the LUCA program. You've taken the next big step by committing to establish a Complete Count Committee. You're ahead of the game, even ahead of what the governor's doing. He's already talking about establishing a state Complete Count Commission, but they won't establish theirs until September. We have a planning session coming up in July. But I've already told them, I'm headed to Fredericksburg to speak with City Council, and they're well ahead of you. And I hope they keep it that way. I said, no, I don't hope. I'm gonna make sure they keep it that way, working with the mayor, city manager, and city council. You will set the track record You will set the track record for what others have to do and how they will follow. The outreach program, the primary goal for outreach is to develop a community support and promotion program to increase participation in the twenty twenty census, to get more people involved, to make sure they fully understand why the census is important to the community. This is a map of the U.S. showing the six regions that are involved on behalf of the Census Bureau with working to increase the census count in twenty twenty. I'm from the Philadelphia region, even though I'm based here in Virginia. And Philadelphia covers eight states and the District of Columbia. We cover Delaware, Maryland, Ohio, Pennsylvania, Tennessee, Kentucky, Virginia, and West Virginia. Unfortunately, I'm liable to be in any one of those locations, whether I want to or not, because we are short staffed right now. We need additional resources. I am the only one covering the Commonwealth of Virginia right now. I've been on board for about a year and a half, but even I cannot cover the entire Commonwealth. We are recruiting for additional partnership specialists to be able to assist me in making sure we're reaching out to local municipalities and making sure we're getting that message out. We're going to be doing extensive recruiting here in the Fredericksburg area. We're going to be opening up six area census offices in Virginia. We're going to start off in January of twenty nineteen with the first one opening up in Fairfax. And then in the middle of the year, we're going to be opening up one in Fredericksburg, Richmond, Roanoke, Norfolk, Alexandria. Again, we need your help. My colleagues are here because they're actually doing the recruiting. They're going to be interviewing people on Thursday here in Virginia for some of the positions. When we open up the office in Fredericksburg, we will have a staff of thirty to forty management team in that office responsible for leading a staff of about a thousand plus people in the field, making sure, again, we have the right addresses. We're going to have a workforce. We're going to be hiring people for a period of time. But we need your help in finding people. We need your help also, again, when it relates to people being able to go online because most of the jobs will interact with the staff via email, being on computers, being, getting their work assignments that way. We're in the age of technology, and we're going to maximize the use of technology to make sure, again, we get the best count possible. I put up a little bit of a timeline for you. In the fall, meaning we've already started, we're going to be doing recruitment for our early census operations, for LUCA, for address canvassing, for partnership specialists being out in the field, developing partnerships and relationships with everyone, developing complete count committees. In the fall of twenty nineteen, we begin our peak operations, really having people out in the field spreading the word about the census, making sure the addresses are correct that we're going to be sending the census forms out to. In August, we're going to have infield address canvassing, again, where needed. In the past, we would have a full blown address canvassing, checking every address to make sure it was the correct one. We're not going to be doing that this time. Only if we have a question, a doubt about an address we have, will we send one, someone out to check that. It is different. This is a different decennial. In March through July twenty twenty, we'll have in person follow up, what we call some non-response follow up for those who do not send their forms in, knocking on doors. But we need a team to be able to do that. So we're going to be recruiting. We already started recruiting, and we're going to continue to recruit. That's just part of our timeline. Let me show you some of our operational timeline. Again, I mentioned infield address canvassing, checking those addresses. Group quarters, we're going to be working with group quarters, colleges and universities, hospitals, in some areas prisons. They have a self-contained population and will help us count, make sure we have an accurate count there. We'll also be doing that internet self-response. Before the April first, two weeks before April first, we'll be sending out postcards, reminders, letting people know the form is coming, and you can fill that out online. We're going to ask them to do that. So that's just some of the operational timelines that we'll be engaging in. Recruitment, I mentioned, extensive recruitment for census jobs, not only just for the decennial, though. Census Bureau does surveys year in, year out. We may do this decennial every ten years, but the Bureau is doing surveys every single year. So in addition to pulling together a staff for the decennial, they will also be hiring for permanent positions within our headquarters and other field operations that they have, permanent positions. So we'll be recruiting for that also, but extensive recruiting. How can you help? Distribution of information about jobs. I have placed in your folder on the left hand side, probably the last page in there, a flyer about the positions we're going to have in our area census offices, positions we're recruiting for. People can go online right now to USA Jobs and look at the various positions we're recruiting for. They can go in there, they can post their resume, they can fill out the profile and apply for the jobs. That will be extensive. That will be ongoing. Encourage community organizations to help us with this job recruiting. If they have computers that people can access, to be able to let people access those jobs to fill out their census form. Identify those facilities where people can go and apply online. Identify locations where we can have training sessions. Each of these individuals will need to be trained on what to do, what we're asking them to do. So we need the sites to be able to do that. Help identify those job applicants. We're going to be looking for a lot of people, but we need your help. We are hiring from the community. It's great Ron Brown can come up and give a presentation from, on twenty twenty census. I live in Richmond, Virginia. I don't know a lot about Fredericksburg. I know in the next year, I will know quite a bit, working with the city manager and the mayor and working with you. But again, people know you here. You're the trusted voices. You have to be able to share with them the importance of the census. We're talking about over six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars annually that will be distributed back into communities across the country based on the population count. Maybe city of Fredericksburg doesn't need any additional dollars. Maybe Mr. Robinson has done it all for you, and you guys are okay. Or maybe you can use some additional dollars for some things. Here's an opportunity to get part of those available dollars that will be coming based on the population count. If one person is missed, that represents about two thousand dollars. And over a ten year period, that person represents about twenty thousand dollars. Can the city of Fredericksburg afford to give up twenty thousand dollars from one person not being counted? That's what you have to consider. Again, some of the positions we're hiring for, and I've placed the information in your packet, area census office manager, census field manager, administrative manager. These are the individuals that will be in the office, work in the office, making sure they supervise the field team for the count for twenty twenty. Here are some salary ranges for those positions. I put in D.C. and Maryland because our Fairfax office initially will be covering those areas when it opens up in January twenty nineteen. Until we roll out the other five offices across Virginia, they will be responsible. But these are some of the salaries that we will be looking at for those individuals who will be applying for these positions. Again, we have asked localities, municipalities, state governors to consider establishing a complete count committee. Sounds like my work has been done because you have already decided to do that, which is a great, great step because it is your citizens, members of your community, who are going to help determine how you do the twenty twenty census here in Fredericksburg. Yes, we will be here to help you. Yes, we will have a lot of information for you, a lot of resources. I am your resource person here in Virginia. I used to not tell people this, but I say, use me and abuse me so that I can help you get the best count possible for Fredericksburg. That's my job. Right now, I'm the only one in Virginia. We'll have another person on board in another month. And then by the end of the year, we have additional eighteen people on board in the Commonwealth to go around meet with individuals, meet with mayors, city managers, meet with community-based organizations, superintendents, other educators, to talk about the twenty twenty census and the importance and to make sure we're doing outreach. CCC is the key to us being able to do that. Again, I can be your resource person, but your community, complete count committee will be your people on the ground doing the running, developing the plans for Fredericksburg. What does a complete count committee look like? Again, just various individuals representing different segments of the population that will come together and help address how you roll this out throughout the community. We're not saying the mayor has to sit on it. It would be nice if she does, but it could be her designee leading the complete count committee. How can you, how do we coordinate with you, collaborate with you? Number of different ways. Provide space that can be used for testing. Provide a list of residential institutions, apartments, other housing, new subdivisions, so that we know where we need to send things, where we need to go. Provide a list of shelters. We're counting everyone. Shelters, group homes, but you have to provide us with that information. Provide temporary job opportunities. Help us get that information out. Promote that for us. Let me just leave you with, here's a contact information for me. Here's a contact information for our regional office in Philadelphia. Please don't hesitate to reach out, and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Well, we thank you, Mr. Brown. We do look forward to working with you. Does any counselor have any questions? I think you've been very thorough in giving us an understanding of what the census count means and what it will mean to our community. So thank you. We look forward to working with you and your staff.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Officer Stephen Lamar, thank you for being with us this evening. I will call upon Mr. Vreeling for an announcement of an opportunity for Fredericksburg.
Computer, please. Just placing. Thank you, Madam Mayor. On behalf of the city of Fredericksburg, it's my privilege tonight to tell you about what I think is a very exciting story for the city of Fredericksburg. And as any good reporter knows, the key to a good story is the five Ws. The who, the what, the when, the where, and the why, as well in this case, is the how and the what comes next.
We're waiting for them.
Do a little impromptu, catch up with the presentation. The who, in this case, is the Potomac Nationals. The Potomac Nationals are a Class A affiliate of the Washington Nationals who are currently in Woodbridge. They've been owned for twenty-nine years by the Silver family, who is sitting in the second row here behind me. And the Potomac Nationals would like to relocate their team, their minor league baseball team, to the city of Fredericksburg. So we're very excited to announce that here tonight. The what, in this, in this case, is a multipurpose stadium that will be privately financed, operated, and maintained and built at Celebrate, Celebrate Virginia South. This is a, this is, this five thousand seat stadium will be a, a great amenity. There's the stadium. And there's the logo. The, the, this stadium will be a great amenity for not only minor league baseball, but an array of, of events, of community events, of sporting events, of, of concerts, of, it'd be a wonderful community amenity for, for the city of Fredericksburg and for the entire region. The when, in this case, I will, I will soon detail the, the arrangement, the agreement that is in place. And we, we have crafted with the Potomac Nationals a letter of intent governing the city's involvement with this project. That letter of intent, with your concurrence, will come to city council on July tenth for a vote at your next meeting. This, we will then, if that is approved, there will then be a hundred and twenty day study period that, that we would, hope would conclude with definitive agreements between the city of Fredericksburg and the Potomac Nationals. And with a goal of having the stadium open in the Nationals, the Potomac Nationals, which would be renamed to the Fredericksburg something by April of two thousand and twenty. The where, as I already spoiled, will be in Celebrate Virginia, which is a development that, as you know, includes the three hotels, the Wegmans, the Expo Center, et cetera. And it was built as a tourism campus with this exact, this exact type of project in mind. It was designed for the, the type of traffic that, that this kind of project will, will bring. And the why, in this case, from a city's perspective, I'm going to call on Mr. Art Silver in a minute to talk about the why from the team's perspective. But the why from the city's perspective as to why to move forward with this, we believe, is that we believe it's very consistent with many of your goals as espoused by the, the comprehensive plan, the Economic Development Strategic Plan, your city council priorities, specifically priority number six. And we believe that this, this stadium will bring many benefits to the city of Fredericksburg, its residents in the entire region. This will provide valuable marketing opportunities for us to tell our story about what a great place the city of Fredericksburg is, to visit, to do business in, to start a business in. This will be a, the city will have the opportunity to use this stadium for an array of events. So this will provide a great new asset, outdoor recreational asset for our community. We truly believe that this will be a, a community asset and a true quality of life enhancement for our entire region. Now the how, how does this get done? As mentioned before, this would be a very unique deal structure. Most minor league baseball stadiums are publicly financed. This one would be privately financed. However, the city would be asked to make a significant contribution to this project. One point oh five million for thirty years. However, we believe that that one point oh five million would be offset by the revenue generated at the stadium, approximately seven hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue annually, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue that we believe we can generate on the use of the stadium, and an a hundred thousand dollar contribution from the developer of Celebrate Virginia, the Silver Companies, which is represented here tonight by David Newman, who's been instrumental in getting this deal to this point. The city would be considered the anchor tenant, which is a term used by real estate developers. To get financing, they have to have a certain commitment of revenue. They will be meeting, in fact, this has already begun, meeting with, with private sector sponsors, with users of people interested in suites and season tickets, et cetera. So this community will be asked to support this project. But the city of Fredericksburg would be the anchor tenant that would help facilitate the private financing with the bank. And the next steps in this, I hope you're seeing some of these pictures to go with it. You can see some of the great things that we'll be able to do at this stadium with an ice rink, concerts, running of the bases, fireworks, scout nights. They'll be heavily involved with city schools, holiday lights, carousels. It'll be a real family-friendly amenity. So as far as what comes next, again, as I mentioned before, the letter of intent will come before you for a vote on July tenth. What will then, that will then kick off a hundred and twenty day study period that will involve a significant public input. The, the public will be given an opportunity to, to weigh in on this. Then, while that's all going on, the team will have a lot of work to do to get the stadium designed and financed and go through the various legislative approvals governing the land use. And the conclusion of that would be the definitive agreements between the team and the city. What would follow would then be the planning and permitting, the construction, and then the opening day. So a lot of work remains. The public will be given a lot of opportunities to weigh in on this. But tonight, this is, is our public announcement of what we think is really a great project and an enhancement for our community. For, we've got a website that just went live about thirty minutes ago, and there's a whole bunch of information on that site. It's FredericksburgBaseball.com. Thanks to Chris Muldro and Jan Urquhart for their help on this project. You can find their frequently asked questions, fast facts, stadium renderings, the letter of intent, and the press release that's going out tonight, and the studies that have been done on the, on financial viability of this project and the, and the expected tax revenue, as well as a brief history of baseball by dovetail, by dovetail a few years ago. At this time, I'm pleased to yield the floor to Mr. Art Silver, who has been the owner of the Potomac Nationals for twenty-nine years, and we're delighted to be working with such a great family on this project. Art?
Welcome, Mr. Silver, and welcome to your family, your daughter and your son and your grandchildren, I believe.
And my daughter-in-law and son-in-law.
And your daughter-in-law and son-in-law, so.
Really everybody that, the whole row.
Welcome, Silver, to Fredericksburg.
They recognize I need all the help that I can get, Madam Mayor.
Well, we're, we're delighted to welcome you, you here this evening, and thank you for being here.
Well, thank you so much, and I cannot tell you how much I appreciate the opportunity of being here. And, and I, I really have to say, the truly extraordinary experience of working with representatives of the city. The staff have just been extraordinary in terms of the information and enabling us to be able to make a decision as to whether or not we felt that this was a viable marriage for ourselves and for the community. And the conclusion that we've come to is that we believe there would be an extraordinary marriage. I, I think that before I get into some of the specifics about our business, I think that it's also important that you know a little bit, you know, about who I am and where I come from and, you know, and so forth. In, in my particular case, this all started a little bit more than seventy-one years ago on April fifteenth, nineteen forty-seven, and I was almost seven years old. So that means I'm going to be seventy-eight in a couple of weeks, and you're supposed to say I don't look anything like baseball. Please say that, okay?
We will.
And it was my first baseball game in Brooklyn, New York. We lived half a block from Old Ebbets Field in the post-war period. And April fifteenth, nineteen forty-seven, in addition to being my first game, was also the first game of another Mr. Robinson who you honored earlier, and that was Jackie Robinson. And Jackie Robinson became my hero. I used to wait for him on the corner from the age of seven until I was fifteen to walk him to the player's entrance. When I played high school ball, college ball, I wore his number forty-two. I coached first base for twenty-two years for our ball club, in between being president and CEO of the bank in the Baltimore, Washington. CEO of the bank in the Baltimore/Washington area for a long time, and wore number 42. And then was honored by the Jackie Robinson Society a few years ago at George Washington University to receive their annual award. But it inculcated a love of the game for me, and how special it was, that when an opportunity 29 years ago came to me, because our bank had a specialty in lending to minor league ball clubs all over the country, and somebody said, "Art, there's a ball club for sale in Prince William County, and are any of your customers interested in buying it?" And I went to one, and he said, "Art, the way you love baseball," and at that time, I was still in my 40s, and I used to go to fantasy camps and hit baseballs and make believe I was still in my 20s. I wasn't. And you ought to buy it. I went to my board of directors to see if they had a problem with it. They did not. And I did, and it has become an extraordinary family experience. My daughter Lonnie, over there, has been president of the ball club for the last 22 years. My son Seth, second from the end, is invaluable in terms of advising us. Seth is an antitrust lawyer with an office in Washington, and when you Google your son and he's got more press than you, that's really what you want. And he does. And it gives me, gives me great joy to, to have that happen. And so we began this incredible adventure of being in the baseball business. And it's extraordinary. We've had four National League Most Valuable Players that have played for us, and I always do this as a trivia question, you know, during the game on our video board and so forth. Barry Bonds, Albert Pujols from St. Louis, Joey Votto with Cincinnati, and Bryce Harper with Washington. And we've had over 300 of our players that have gone on to the major leagues in the last 20 years. About half of the players in the Washington Nationals have worn our uniform. Because we are so close, and will continue to be just about as close here, we get all the major league guys on rehab. We don't like to see anybody get hurt, but the cash register begins to ring a little bit. And we get a Ryan Zimmerman coming down, or a Bryce Harper, or Stephen Strasburg, Anthony Rendon, or Michael Taylor, or Murphy, or whatever. I mean, it's, ballpark gets filled up. Because those guys can do their rehab, and then they're able to go home and go to sleep in their own beds. And, and they absolutely love it, and frankly, we, we treat them like gold, and they are incredible. Their availability to the fans is just absolutely extraordinary. I, I don't know if it's possible to take a tour of the ballpark, or if we're having a problem with the... Okay? During this period of time, and, and certainly what's going to happen over the next four months, the 120 days of the study period, we've already engaged an architectural firm. We've already identified the general contractor. We worked out a deal for the land with the Silver Companies. And we're about to put the job out to bid to make sure that we can build it for the $35 million that we have budgeted to, to pay for it. And, and that is a big number. And I might add that it's a number that I have to personally guarantee. And our risk is the ball club. And if we didn't think, or we don't feel, that this is something that would not work, I guarantee you, we wouldn't do it. Because we wouldn't risk the equity in the ball club. It's a valuable asset, and there is no way on earth that, that we would consider that. But we think that we've got a great opportunity here, an incredible location and a great community. And we've created, if you look up on the screen, and I wish that it could fill the whole screen, I realize you're having a problem there. But that would be the entrance, the main entrance coming into the ballpark. It's going to sit, and I'm supposed to not tell you exactly, other than, than Celebrate Virginia. Okay, I apologize. But it's a great location, excellent parking, a lot of parking on site. And the main entrance over there is basically down the right field line. And as you come in, you've got a ticket office on the left, and a, our souvenir shop and store over on the right, and coming right out of the, the parking lots. And you're looking across the field, and if you look all the way across atop that white area before the foul pole out in left field, that is actually an amusement park with inflatables merry-go-rounds, things like that, splash pools, ultimately, an ice skating rink that we plan on doing. Over in the right field corner, we're going to have a crab shack. Our plan is to steam crabs during the entire game, and for a single price, you're going to be able to get a ticket and all the crabs you want to eat, and we hope that you will drink some beer. And, and we think that that's just a great, you know, environment. If you look at the, the slide that's up there now, and you look, you will enter at grade, and then the entire seating bowl is below grade, okay? And there is 5,000 seats, capacity is going to be about seven, and every seat's an individual Directly behind home plate, and again, I wish I had a pointer here, can make it bigger, thanks, Bill, but directly behind home, you see that large glass expanse. That's going to be what we call the club level. And that's going to be a dining area that will be open all year long. And that area is available for meetings. Under our agreement, you would have the use of the facility 183 days a year, in effect for whatever events that you wanted to, to have there. That will seat about 300 people. We're going to do it as a fine dining area that would have like a prime rib station, salmon station, vegetable bars, potato bar, salad bar, dessert bar, and so forth. And then you would be served drinks and coffee at your table. You could watch the game from in there, or you could go outside and watch the game behind home plate. It is a tremendous amenity. It's actually going to have two levels, and that is going to be open all year round. I also have one of the largest collections of signed baseballs in the country. First one I got from Jackie Robinson, as a matter of fact, when I was 12 years old. It was a very poor neighborhood, and we used to wait across the street and wait for balls to get hit out of the ballpark. And we would stand there as little kids with the old tube-type radios and batteries of, nobody here's old enough to remember that. And, and wait, we'll discuss that later. At any rate, we'd wait for baseballs, we'd catch them, and then I, we'd give them to the players, and I gave one to Jackie Robinson. I said, "Mr. Robinson, would you have the Dodgers sign a baseball?" And he did, and he gave that to me, and, and then I got to know him in later years, and I know his daughter Sharon, who works major league baseball. Just exciting man, who was only 52 years old when he passed away. But at any rate, that was my first baseball. I now have 900 others. And going back to 1923, the famous 1923 White Sox, which was four years after the Black Sox scandal. Now, I know there's nobody in here that remembers that, but that's when bad gangsters got the White Sox to throw the World Series, and Schurless Joe Jackson was banned from baseball. So I have one of the first baseballs after that. I've got Babe Ruth on a .31 Yankees ball, or the first baseball Ted Williams ever signed in 1936 as a member of the San Diego Padres minor league team. And we're going to have a exhibit area where we're going to send in rotating amounts of baseballs to be able to show the community and to create some sense of history. First of all, in terms of the fact that there used to be a Brooklyn Dodgers, there used to be a New York Giants, and there used to be a Philadelphia Athletics, and, and a Boston Braves, and, you know, things like that. So we're, we're excited about that. To the right of the club level and to the left are two private suites. Each one of those suites will seat 25 people. And up above that, again, connected by an elevator, are nine more private suites. And we believe that, at least so far, the reaction from the corporate community has really been extraordinary in terms of their desire to have this amenity as a place and a forum for entertainment. At the same time, those suites can also be boardrooms, meeting rooms, private areas for receptions, and so forth. And again, with the type of kitchen and cooking facilities that we've got, we really can do almost anything there. Up on the top level is the press box, which is going to have really state-of-the-art production facilities, along with a high-definition video board that we have right now in our current ballpark that we actually just bought not that long ago and can be moved, as well as an additional one. We can do high-definition TV. And we produce a lot of our own stuff right now that we actually put on in terms of commercials for a lot of our sponsors, in addition to filming things. We believe that the games, we tip, we broadcast our games on our website, because that's better than an AM or FM station, and, but we would certainly be open to a local cable TV station in terms of showing the games on TV as well. We can do concerts in there, and we think that that is a major deal for the ballpark because of the amenities that are there, in terms of the suites, in terms of the club level, in terms of the comfortable seating, in terms of the ability to generate high-quality food because of the, of the bathroom quality, the, the parking. And we think that that's a natural in terms of, of doing that as well. We are a community asset. Scouting. We do four scout nights during the course of a season, sometimes three. I think it depends upon the individual needs. And what that means is, is that everybody and their families come to the game. The kids all march in formation, and their uniform is before, and they do their color guard. And we always have kids or Little Leaguers before the national anthem, standing with players, and then going out to the position with the players until after the national anthem is concluded, and then they come back. And we always have some young school group leading us in the national anthem. With Scout Night, the first time we did it, 20-odd years ago, and what happens is, after the game, all of the kids go into the outfield with their families, and they set up these tents. And there's a sea of tents. We can have 800 to 1,000 people out there. And I'd go out there, and people would come over, and they would say, "Art, I just want you to know that I did this 20 years ago with my family, and now I'm doing it with my children." And it's a generational type of thing, and in some cases, people do it a couple of times a season because it's, it's so meaningful to them. Well, we had a little problem the first time that we did it, and that was, at 2:00 in the morning, the sprinkler system went off. So here's a kid in a pup tent, and all of a sudden, a sprinkler head pops up right next to him. And it took us about 20 minutes before we managed to turn it off. That's the first thing on our checklist right now that we actually, you know, deal with. I can go on and on in terms of every nonprofit that we have worked with. It would be more difficult for me to think of the ones that we haven't worked with, or the church groups that we haven't worked with, or what we've done with Little League. As a family, we have never tried to take the last dollar out of it. Our job is to provide affordable family entertainment, and in a physically safe environment. And in the last 29 years, I can only think of two college kids, maybe 20 years ago, that came to the ballpark that had too much to drink before they got there, that we actually had to ask to leave. Never had a car broken into, never had an assault in all those years. We have security, but it's light security. It is, and they are my friends. And we believe that right now, the excitement of what we want to do here and what we want to do with you is something that I cannot tell you how strongly we believe in what we're seeing in this community. The outreach to us, the reaction from all of the people that we have actually visited with has been so extraordinary. Anything I can do to answer any of your questions, either me, my daughter, my son, even my grandchildren would be happy to, you know, to assist you because they already know it. We've got one already working in our store. But I will make myself available to you. I will make myself available to any community group that has any questions, and if anybody has any questions right now, I'm more than happy to, to answer them.
I'm sorry, my microphone was off. I apologize to the listening public. I will start over. But I thank you, Mr. Silver, very much, and by saying that there will be multiple opportunities. This has been an, an ongoing discussion for some time to bring it to this point, but it will be an even more public ongoing, or a public ongoing discussion going forward. Mr. Baroudy, I'll ask you about next steps and what you would like from the council at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just, first of all, like to say that it's been also a delight to work with the Silver family over these past several months. It's been a great conversation, and I hope we can continue the dialogue to opening day. Madam Mayor, no actions required tonight, of course. We would simply like to schedule this LOI consideration for your formal vote on July 10th, and unless we hear any objection, that's what we'll plan to do.
All right. So it will come before council, the LOI, which is a letter of intent, which indicates a serious and exclusive intent for the Potomac Nationals to work with the city of Fredericksburg to be, to bring their minor league baseball team here. But that is what we will be discussing on the July 10th meeting. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now that we've made the announcement, I just want to make a few quick comments. I know, and I want to rehash a lot of what's been said here, but first, Mr. Silver, I want to thank you very much, you and your family, for bringing this, this really unique and exciting opportunity to the city of Fredericksburg. And I think it's important that, when we look at it from our perspective, that we are looking at a venue that will enhance our recreational activities. It will basically bring entertainment, community events to our city. We are looking at a venue that will enhance our economic development opportunities over time. And the icing on the cake, because now we're looking at a facility that we can use for parks and rec, we can use for concerts, we can use for community events, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But the icing on the cake is the minor league baseball component and bringing to Fredericksburg a piece of our hometown team, the Washington Nationals, which I think is just absolutely a fantastic opportunity for the city, but not the main reason for this from the city's standpoint, in that it's providing a venue that, frankly, we've talked about doing a lot more for parks and rec over the years, and, and the budget has been such that we have had to put them off because of other events. And I think it's also important to note with regards to this project, not only is it with regards to stadiums, but even performing arts centers, they are normally public-private partnerships, and this is a public-private partnership. And, but in, in a sense, it's a unique one in that, and, and as we, these discussions continue, I would ask the residents of Fredericksburg and those people interested in this project to look into some of these things. to look into some of these things. Most of these, as Bill pointed out, are community-financed and built and a lease from the team, which usually, on average, is a 70-30 split, 70 to locality, 30% to the team on a lease. And then, in addition to that, of course, we would be responsible for the maintenance and the upkeep of the facility. In this particular case, it's being reversed, which is somewhat unique. And if you look at all the deals that have gone on in the Carolina League, which this is, and in minor league baseball in general, you know, we're now basically saying we ought to let the Silvers, the family, build and maintain the stadium. And basically, what we're doing is taking the revenue from the stadium and putting it back into it primarily as a leaseback for us because we want to use it for events, for our Little League, for our schools, for our churches, for the community, for events. And I think that is a different way to look at it, and I think very advantageous both for the family and for the city. So, I'd ask people to take a closer look at how these are put together. And what bringing the team also helps us with is, I know we get a lot of discussion in the cars of this, I've been through this and some of my colleagues have been through this before, this is also something that Major League Baseball is involved in. And they bring some, well, excuse the pun, backstopping of any agreements we have with the team here and with regards to the financing, keeping things moving and going, which is a great thing. And also, more importantly, the amount of advertising and visibility the City of Fredericksburg is going to get in other markets, especially the Washington DC market, is quite extensive and is very, very good for the City of Fredericksburg. It's our target market when we talk about tourism and bringing people down here. And I would also ask people to look at the league itself and the running of the other stadiums. Go online, look at the other teams in the league, see how they're performing, see what they're doing. We're talking about a league that I believe has been around for 75-plus years. Most teams, on average, have been there for 30 years, and most of these localities are very happy to have them there. You can also look at, go across the river into Charles County and the Blue Crabs that play in Southern Maryland, and you'll see that the vast majority of the events at that facility are not baseball. They're community events. There are Shakespeare in the Park, there are concerts, there are fireworks, there's weddings. And I would urge a lot of people to go up and catch a game because we're talking about a small, community facility, 5,000 seats. We're not talking 55,000-seat Major League Baseball stadiums in big, huge facilities. We're talking about what is truly a community amenity, and the money that we're putting in, which is being generated by the project, is to make Fredericksburg a much better place to live, to provide everybody opportunities, not only in sports, but probably in entertainment and otherwise. And I really look forward to continuing these discussions, and I'm really looking forward to the dialogue with the community. And I really ask the community to go out again and look at other teams and how they're put together. Look at this league and see how the teams are put together. Look at what the attendance records are for these teams. And I think if we do all that and we have this community discussion, we're going to come back and say, "We need this," and it's good and very beneficial for the City of Fredericksburg. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Frye?
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. I would like to extend my thanks for even thinking about Fredericksburg, for this opportunity. And of course, we have to wait, you know, to see what happens, so on and so forth. I don't like jumping the gun, but I, you know, I like to see everything in writing for the public especially. But this is a big deal coming to Fredericksburg. And I want to thank staff for everything, you know, working on this. It's a lot of work that goes into even presenting something like this because it's like, it's going to be a shock value to the city, you know, to the residents, but it's a big deal. And to add a couple of things, what I see in this is the fact that we have X amount, let's say, I'll just throw a random number, 40% probably families in Fredericksburg, in the City of Fredericksburg, that can't afford to go to a Nationals game or to a Redskins game, or you name it, that can't afford to do it. And, you know, it's the home team to a lot of folks, but not really to a lot of other folks, you know? And that's just a reality. And we have a high free meal program. Everybody knows how that's based. You know, a lot of free meals here in the city. So, it's real. It's really happening here. So, with the cost of living increases, everybody talks about, housing increases, everybody talks about. To have an opportunity like this, to come to the City of Fredericksburg, to me, is a no-brainer. And I just, I just see a lot of potential and a lot of exposure to the youth, you know, of what else is out there in the world. Because a lot of these kids here won't see the world, you know, until they become adults. They won't know what's out there. They'll be experiencing everything brand-new, you know, once they leave high school or whatever the case. So, just to bring the element of everything that a component like this brings, I just, I'm just happy to be sitting here on council and Fredericksburg is even considered. And in a sense, I don't want nobody to laugh, but this may make us officially a city. Because a lot of people look at us like a town, you know, but we're the go-to spot. So, I will, I will say, we could take some credit for that. We're the go-to spot in this area. But, you know, things like this is what would make us, you know, an official city, a little bit more official. But thanks, and that's all I have. I just, anything that's going to make it better for everybody here, I'm all, you know, you never know what 10-year-old kid, 8-year-old kid right now that may be having just dreams of the pros of just by seeing what's going on. Just a dream, a dream is good enough sometimes just to live off. You don't have to make it, you can just have that dream.
Can I just add a...
You certainly may.
Thank you, what the councilman said. We're very cognizant of the people in a community that economically can't go to a Washington Nationals game, and there are people who can't afford to go to one of our games. Art ticket prices run anywhere from, like, $8 to $15. Every Monday night is Dollar Night, where you can get a general admission ticket for a dollar and a hot dog for a dollar. And we will wind up with a couple of thousand people that come to the ballpark that would never be able to be there otherwise. And it is probably the best night of the week for us. And, you know, we do all types of, different types of promotions and marketing and so forth, and it maybe sounds easy for me to stand up here and say those things. But if you at all investigate who we are and our history and so forth, we've been doing Dollar Night for years. And, you know, do we make money on it? No, we don't, but it is a great night. And I am hoping that in April 2020, I don't know yet if opening day is a Monday, but whenever that first Monday is there, I hope that you'll all be out.
Thank you. We'll see that they're there. Counselor Ellis and then Counselor Duffy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was involved pretty heavily on the first go-around of this, not with your organization, but the other baseball opportunity we were pursuing. And this is a, I'll just say, this is a far superior deal. We'll call it that for sure. And two years ago, when we were at our City Council Retreat, we pressed staff to be proactive in economic development. Pressed them hard. Well, here we are. We've got an opportunity here that was proactively sought, and we've been working, as you know, a lot in closed session to get it to this point, so it's a very exciting night. We have $1 million a year, a lot of money for 30 years. It certainly is. But I do believe the analysis that's been done, I remember the numbers done on the previous analysis, and I do believe the revenue is going to be there to support that. Is there risk? Yeah, there is. There absolutely is. There's never, no investment is without risk, zero investment. It just doesn't happen that way. But you've got to take some risks sometimes.
There's no reward if there's no risk.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
That's right.
That's right. You want to grow, you've got to get outside your comfort zone. So, and I think that's what we're doing here. I do believe it will help differentiate us. We've long sought the abilities to figure out how to differentiate ourselves. Cali-Harry was on the map, but then the Great Recession hit. Well, we know what happened with that. So, this is a great opportunity and very, very excited. Hope the council will see it through to the end.
Again, I apologize. You know, it's very difficult, you know, with a couple of minutes to try and remember the things you're supposed to say. One of the things that I forgot to say is the number of kids that we hire. We are the first job that almost all of the kids in the community have. We hire all the 16-year-olds, 17-year-olds, 18-year-olds, senior citizens coming back. We have about 200 of them on the payroll each season. We now have the children of the children over the last 34 years that we've been where we are. And they trust us. They know that we're going to teach them, we're going to teach them to come to work on time, we're going to teach them proper hygiene, we're going to teach them to dress properly. What we don't have to teach them is how to use a computer. They teach us that. Or how to use a tablet, or how to work in a concession stand where everybody, we do everything through a main server, and they're just, I mean, I'm disbelief at my age on what they do with a tablet and how they swipe a credit card and everything else. But we have thousands, I forget, Lonnie, how many jobs we felt that we created over the last 34 years, but I think it was like 6,000 jobs, first-time jobs that don't otherwise exist from these kids. You know, we're not taking them away from somebody else. Otherwise, they wouldn't have it. And again, it's an extraordinary experience for us to be able to work with. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
That's all right. That's all right. That's all right. Counselor Duffy?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. The Silver family, thank you for being here. It looks like a great opportunity. Looking forward to learning more and hopeful that this can all work out. And look forward to hearing from the public, too, of course. I want to especially thank staff for all the work you did in putting some of these ideas together and certainly this proposal, and look forward to it very much. Thank you.
This is our 40th anniversary. We started in 1978 as the Alexandria Dukes. We would love to celebrate our 42nd anniversary here. And my 80th birthday as well.
Well, there you go. Well, there you go.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Withers? Vice Mayor Withers?
Everybody said pretty much everything, and I just want to simply thank you and your family for being here. And I also went to my first game at Griffith Stadium in 1949, so I'd like to get together with you sometime and we'll talk about that.
But you were a baby in somebody's arms.
I was six. I was six. Thank you.
You're younger than I am.
Not much, a little bit.
Mr. Freeling, I believe you referred to a website. I know the public would like to know more, and we have actually put up information on the city's website in more detail about this project. And we, there is also a website. Mr. Freeling, you want to tell, remind everybody of that?
Yes, Madam Mayor. It's FredericksburgBaseball.com, and it is live now. So, FredericksburgBaseball.com.
It went live tonight. So, by all means, we look forward to hearing from folks, and most of all, we look forward to working with the Silver family to bring minor league baseball to Fredericksburg and make our multi-use stadium a reality.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, back down to earth, we have three public hearings this evening. Madam Clerk, would you please read 5A? And I will, go ahead. Would you please read item 5A?
Mayor, we're going to combine the two.
5A and 5B are related, and we will take them both as one public hearing. All righty. Thank you. Would you read both, please?
Repealing restrictions on parking and public streets near the University of Mary Washington campus by UMW commuting and resident students. 5B, amending the residential permit parking program and establishing resident parking, permit parking zones in the college heights and college terrace neighborhoods.
Mr. Fawcett?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to begin by expressing I hope no one had a difficult time finding a place to park this evening. There are two ordinances. They're companion ordinances, we have discussed before, where they really need to be considered together, and that's why the public hearing has been combined. The first one, 1809, is to repeal what is generally known as the no UMW student parking policies in the neighborhoods adjacent to the campus. And it's just as straightforward as that with the adoption of this ordinance, this, and assuming the adoption of the second ordinance with the resident permit parking, those signs would come down later this summer on the schedule that we're on. The second ordinance is somewhat more involved, but still, I'll be brief in my comments in consideration at the time. It is a general ordinance to amend the city code, several sections of the city code related to the resident permit parking program. And very briefly, it would repeal the list of streets and blocks within the city where resident permit parking can be established and essentially establish the entire city as eligible for that under the criteria that are established in the city code. It would amend the standards for establishing zones. It would streamline that somewhat. It would authorize the city manager to establish zones on streets that meet the applicable standards. It would authorize the termination of permit parking in an area upon petition from property owners or on the city's own action if the character of the neighborhood changes to where residential permit parking is no longer appropriate. We don't anticipate that occurring, but in our review of the city code in preparation for this, we noticed that there, although there was a great deal of language about establishing zones, there currently today is no language to terminate a zone. So, we're proposing to add that in case that arises in the future. It would authorize the city manager to issue permits to residents of areas where time restrictions apply on parking and authorize the residents of those areas to be exempt from those time restrictions. And the final bullet point, so to speak, and the one of great interest, is it would establish the college heights and college terrace resident permit parking zones. This has been about a 15-month process. It started with the delivery of the Parking Action Plan in March of 2017, in which various recommendations were made. A parking task force had been working with the consultant and city staff up to that point. Since the delivery of the report, a parking advisory committee consisting of two members of council, two members from the EDA, and a representative each from the University of Mary Washington and Fredericksburg Main Street have been working on the document. There's been a great deal of public input. We've met with the neighborhoods with, on the university campus and in other formats as well. So, what is before you tonight and what, I will pause so that the public may have their say, are these two ordinances which have been recommended to the council by staff and that the city council passed each of them through first reading at its June 12th meeting. And the recommendation is that the city council consider adoption on second and final reading after the public hearing tonight.
And that includes the considerations that were made by the Parking Advisory Committee, the revisions?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. The Parking Advisory Committee met as recently as last night and adopted certain modifications which were forwarded to the council today for the consideration of the institutional parking needs in the neighborhood, particularly in the College Avenue area and the Augustine Avenue area.
Thank you. Any member of council have any questions for Mr. Fawcett? Then this is a public hearing. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, and remember that we have a five-minute time limit, so please respect that. But come to the podium and give your name and address for the record.
I'm Kent Rahm. I'm the rector of Trinity Episcopal Church, 825 College Avenue here in Fredericksburg. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for allowing me to come forward. And also, a big thank you to Doug Fawcett and members of the Parking Committee for listening to and talking with Trinity Church and others in order to help make the proposal work. I appreciate that the council, or that the proposal is going to allow two-hour non-resident parking... I appreciate that the council, or that the proposal is going to allow two-hour non-resident parking during the restricted hours around Trinity Church. That'll be a big help for the members of the congregation. We've been in that location since nineteen fifty-nine, and it's a, a big help to, to be able to continue to, to park on the street. We're looking forward to working out details about how Trinity can reserve space for, in case there's a large funeral, perhaps a big wedding, whatever it may be. It's similar to the ways that, that works downtown, that downtown churches have been doing in the past. That will make a, a big help for us. That'll be a big help. And we're hoping that we're going to be able to get twenty-five sort of guest passes, I guess is what they're being called, something to that effect, so that members of the congregation, or if there's some special events that really don't call for closing down the parking on the street, but it would allow us to have other folks come in and park, that's going to make a big difference. And I hope that goes through. I know that's still a little bit in question, but that would make a difference for us. And I'm grateful for understanding that there's a possibility that some of these things might be, the word was tweaked, in future months if it doesn't work out quite as we were hoping right away, that we can kind of improve the program as it moves along. Because I'm sure there are going to be problems that we don't anticipate that are going to come, come to the fore. And so mindful of how important parking is to many of the residents in the area. And given that Trinity Church's needs have been met and respected, and I appreciate that. And in speaking with my colleague, that the needs of Christ Lutheran Church have also been met, I'm very happy to be able to support the, the resolution or the, the ordinance and hope that it, it does pass. I can't, I can't help but I have to say that I am a very happy to be at Trinity Church. It's a big part of my life, obviously. But as a person who likes other things as well, I have to quote Susan Sarandon from Bull Durham and say that I'm also a big believer in the church of baseball. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Anne Jones Martin, pastor of Christ Lutheran Church, thirteen hundred Augustine Avenue, Fredericksburg, Virginia, two-two-four oh one. I simply want to make reference to a letter dated six-twenty-eight, two thousand and eighteen submitted to the city council and ask that it be entered into the minutes of the meeting. The letter expresses my thanks to the council and especially to Mr. Doug Fawcett, Assistant, Assistant City Manager, for your joint efforts to develop a parking plan that aims to meet the needs of all the neighbors in the College Heights neighborhood, including both the residents and the churches. I want to express my support of the recommendations of the Parking Advisory Committee to accommodate on-street church parking. And I would ask, along with my colleague Reverend Kent Rom, that the council consider issuing visitor parking passes, a number of visiting parking passes to the churches for use during those times where church func, church functions do exceed the two-hour time limit and are during the restricted hours. But again, thank you so much for your, your work, working with the churches and coming together to find a solution that really does meet the needs of the churches. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
My name is Ronald Amen. I live at fourteen thirty-six Buckner Street in College Heights West. I'm here to speak on behalf of College Heights residents, which seem to have been overlooked so far. I guess to that extent, I do not support the resolution. I do not support the ordinance and hope that we can have another review of it so that the residents, which are the primary inhabitants of College Heights, their best interests be served. First of all, regarding College Heights parking, there are two issues. Only one issue has been addressed. College Heights is invaded by both students and church customers. Both populations must be targeted or no one gets targeted. You target one and you don't target the other, that violates the Fourteenth Amendment's equal protection clause. It opens the city to class-action lawsuits by the students or the university acting on behalf of the students. You must treat both groups equally. You must treat them the same. Why aren't we hearing this from the city attorney? Probably because the College Heights Civic Association has done their best to sweep it under the rug. I, I have never been so fed up with one association in my entire life. We've got the College Heights Civic Association that has waged war on U M W students. U M W students are not the enemy. U M W students are not a singular problem. We have the church problem as well. It, it just seems that College Heights residents have been totally forgotten. We have a horrendous problem with hordes of church people constantly flooding our neighborhood anytime they get called in. This is not only Sundays in which they arrive all day in shifts at some of the churches. We are wasting our time restricting parking by signage and then handing out church exemptions as if they are not part of the problem. Again, feeding a student-class action lawsuit against the city and adding insult to injury. We want to make, we need to make churches good neighbors. Now, we have Trinity Church that claims to have seventy off-street parking. This is more than enough in a residential neighborhood. You do not have a funeral, we have never had a funeral in the city that, that has as many as seventy vehicles in it. It's more like ten. The Lutheran Church uses their off-street parking, and they have none, for a children's playground and then says, hey, we have no off-street parking. I, I just, we, we just need to work on this. And, and, and my, my biggest, I, I have not come here, I have not made any presentation prior to then because I have depended on the association, the College Heights Civic Association, to represent us, which they have not done. The College Heights Civic Association, to begin with, meets at one of the problems that's in the Lutheran Church continually. This is a one-sided affair with the association. They hold all of the meetings in the Lutheran Church. How can they be fair? They can't. I propose, and then again, I, I would say, please listen to them with a very careful ear. I propose two solutions here. And I beg of council to please, please leave those lucky enough, and I have spoken before to city personnel about how I have sign envy for those streets, and I'm speaking in particular of Adams Street, of having resident parking only. That this has worked great for the city, worked great for the residents there. Please leave the resident permit parking only on every College Heights street. That is what we need to stop this invasion, to stop this erosion of our quality of life. And again, I, I would make the, the pitch for church exemption only in the perimeter surrounding the property. Now, for the Lutheran Church that will be on Augustine Avenue, as they front on Augustine Avenue, a portion of Brent Street, a portion of Dandridge Street. And then do not encroach on the neighbors across the street on either side. I, I would, I would, again, please, please listen to what I have to say. Ms. Lacy, you said that you would take a copy of my notes. I would like to thank council for the opportunity to at least present my viewpoint and why I'm so upset over this. So thank you very much again.
Thank you, Mr. Buckner.
Amen.
What?
Amen.
Amen. Oh, I apologize, Mr. Amen. I confused your street with your name.
Greetings, Madam Mayor, members of council. I have the privilege of representing a, a young adult community that is both church and student-related. So I get to, I guess, be both invaders.
May I ask for the record, since this is recorded, your name and address?
Yes, yes, ma'am. My name is Ganon, G A N N O N, last name Sims, S I M S.
Thank you.
I work at fifteen fourteen College Avenue, and I'm a city resident at thirty-two oh four Linden Avenue, right across from the Heritage Trail. So I, I'm well aware of, of changes in cities and, and what we, what we get to deal with. And this is a really, really fantastic time to be a part of this city. We do have a young adult community that's been present in College Heights since nineteen forty-eight, Trinity Church there since nineteen fifty-nine. We do rely on parking on, along Augustine Street and Stafford Avenue and College Avenue, those main thoroughfares for us, our community members and students who are commuting in. Many of our, our community members are Germana students. They live out in the county. We have also, as, as you'll see in the packet that I provided, a lot of other benefit for the city. We do mentoring and discipleship and development of business leaders in our community. We host trainings, we host events. We had a wellness expo a couple of weeks ago with folks from the Fredericksburg Food Co-op. So we really are a religious and community center. And, and we'd love to be able to continue operating it at full capacity. And having some two-hour parking, I think, along Augustine and along Stafford, particularly in that sixteen hundred, fifteen, sixteen hundred block of Stafford and Augustine would be really helpful to us. I did a little quick survey of, of the parking situation at peak hour at noon today as, as per the parking proposal. I said noon was our peak hour. I, I did a little counting along Augustine and Stafford, particularly that sixteen hundred block where there are no houses. Every house has on-street or has off-street parking. There are only three cars parked in the, in the marked spaces there. So I mean, this is the way that it will be without students, without faculty in the neighborhood. It's June twenty-sixth. So this is what we're looking at, very, very sparse along those main thoroughfares. So I've just, I'd, I'd love to see further consideration made to those major thoroughfares. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mr. Sims?
Kent Rom from Trinity Episcopal Church again. Just for a correction of fact, Trinity Church has forty-seven parking places off-street. There was a typo in the Freelance Star. We have forty-seven places and easily have funerals of far more than, than that.
All right, Mr. Mr. Reverend Rom.
Everyone, my name is Hillary Casey. I live at one-two-zero-six College Avenue, Fredericksburg, two-two-four-zero-one. And I've lived, lived across from the university for three years now. I'm proud to be a resident of College Heights. I'm proud to be a resident of the city of Fredericksburg. I really enjoy living here and being a part of the community and having this opportunity to speak to you all this evening as well. I've been here a few times and listened to this discussion over the last year as well. So I'm, I'm very happy to be here. Also appreciate the care that U M W puts into their property to keep up the beautiful campus that I get to see across the street from my house every day. And I enjoy the variety of events that the university offers to the community. That being said, it would be great to have some relief from what happens in front of my house every day. Even in summer school right now, we have parkers that park all day, walk across the street. It's been difficult when we want to have contract work done. We play musical cars quite often. The neighbors text each other and try to reserve spots for one another if they have work being done the next day. We try to plan ahead and block off a few spaces or let them use our driveways so that they can have work done on their house. Trying to have family and friends over more than one or two cars at a time is a challenge as well. I understand that comes with living in the city. I understand that comes with living across from the college. And I realize that there may be objections by those at times who do not wish to or maybe even unable to walk great distances to get to some of their destinations. I've worked at Capital One for eighteen years in Richmond and being one of the largest employers in the state, I often had to park two or three parking lots back each day, which extended my walk to and from the car. And it was made even worse in inclement weather such as rain or the cold. So I understand and have empathy for those who may have to walk a little bit further by parking in the university parking deck or assigned parking from the college. I do want to support and express my support of ordinance eighteen dash zero nine and ordinance eighteen dash ten to ensure we have a clear path forward for our neighborhood. With all of the effort put into creating a plan, it would be unfortunate if these ordinances are not passed by city council this evening. I would like to thank the College Heights Civic Association, their board members, and all others who have worked as a partner with the Parking Advisory Committee, city staff, University of Mary Washington, and our area churches and faith-based services for the last fifteen months. Your efforts certainly do not go unnoticed. I believe the plan being recommended is a good start in the residential parking improvement process as long as it is carefully monitored by city staff and the Parking Advisory Committee, with input from all parties concerned and adjustments to the plan made accordingly as needed. So I do ask the city council to approve the ordinances this evening, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Casey.
Madam Mayor, members of council and staff. My name is Meredith Beckett, and I live at fourteen oh one Brent Street, Fredericksburg, two-two-four oh one. And I'm the current president of the College Heights Civic Association. I would like to make one correction to the gentleman that spoke prior about the College Heights meetings, our meetings. Our annual meeting is held in, in truth at Christ Lutheran Church. They've been very generous in allowing us to use their church hall because it has a large enough capacity to hold our, our membership. Our monthly board meetings were held for years at the General Store, which is no longer here, and are now held at Home Team Grill. Over the last fifteen months, our Board of Directors has been working with Assistant Manager, City Manager Doug Fawcett and Ward Three Counselor Tim Duffy to help provide input into a proposed resident parking zone in College Heights. Mr. Fawcett and Counselor Duffy have met numerous, numerous, numerous times, not only with our board, but with residents of our neighborhood and the Parking Action Committee to try to create a parking plan to be put in place once the no U M W student parking signs are removed. The recommendations from the P A C before council tonight are a result of this input, and we believe help to protect our residents' access to their homes, ensure safety for children and pedestrians, and preserve the character of our residential streets while taking into consideration the needs of our neighborhood churches for their worship services and activities. In the nine years I have been a member of the College Heights Board of Directors and also four years on the Town and Gown Committee, the subject of parking in the neighborhood has been at the top of virtually every meeting agenda. We realize there is no perfect solution in addressing parking issues in College Heights. However, the recommendations of the Parking Advisory Committee, as currently presented, are an appropriate first step to help alleviate an ongoing parking problem in the neighborhood. The College Heights Civic Association Board supports them and asks that council approve them in order to implement R P P zones in College Heights. If council approves, we know that some tweaking will need to be done over the next year or so to refine the system and have been assured by Mr. Fawcett and Counselor Duffy that the P A C and city staff will monitor how well the new restrictions are working and make appropriate changes if necessary. The College Heights Civic Association is grateful to the members of the Parking Advisory Committee and to Mr. Fawcett for the endless hours they have dedicated to trying to find a workable solution to parking issues, not only in College Heights, but in the rest of the city, and we thank them for their diligence.
Thank you, Ms. Beckett.
Harriet Row, twelve thirty-eight Brent Street. Madam Mayor, honorable council members. I was hoping I would see what the changes were. I talked to the city clerk to see if there was a different map where the additional lines were drawn. I remember from the last meeting that the line for church parking was in front of the church on Augustine, and then it went down along its property line in Brent Street. And I could not find a map that showed the changes on the council site, and I really didn't see the changes on the presentation that the city clerk had. see the changes on the presentation that the city clerk had and asked for. So I wanted to ask, do I understand that now the additional property of parking is going to be on Augustine Avenue across from the church and additional parking on Brent Street again across from the church and that's it?
I will let Mr. Fawcett speak to that.
And on Dandridge. So the, the, the church frontage immediately on Brent, Augustine, and Dandridge. Augustine being the frontage of the church and then the small sections of Brent and Dandridge. And then the addition is the areas immediately across the street on all three of those frontages.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ram.
Just for clarification, the other change is the addition of the, the opposite side of College Avenue between William and Hanover to the two-hour parking in that area. So both sides now of College Avenue between William and Hanover are proposed to be two-hour except by permit as well. Those, those are the two changes since the June twelfth reading of the ordinances.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fawcett. Are there any other speakers?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of city council. I'm Paul Fallon, a resident of eighteen thirteen Gunther Lane and a faculty member of the University of Mary Washington. I speak as a city resident, but note that my sentiment is shared by scores of my colleagues. I'm dismayed that you voted on the first reading before holding this public hearing and that recommendations of the Parking Advisory Council made last night are not available to the public to study. City council appears poised to vote in favor of a plan that bestows privileges in the form of residential parking permits for residents of College Heights and College Terrace, but in fact, these privileges will discriminate against other members of the community that work at, do business with, and interact with the university. Furthermore, I'm afraid at least some of the basis for making this decision rests on emotion instead of the facts of the situation. I would like to go back to some of the basic findings from the March twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen report that you commissioned from walking, Walker Parking Consultants and for which you paid a handsome sum, also shared by UMW. Walker's analysis of the College Heights and College Terrace neighborhoods did not indicate a parking shortage. They found that at peak demand at noon, forty-seven percent of available supply was occupied. In College Terrace, peak was at ten PM when fifty-one percent of capacity was occupied. These statistics are not buried deep in the report, but are highlighted in the executive summary on page Roman four. College Heights at its peak had less than half of its seven-hundred-ten spaces occupied when four-hundred-and-sixty-four were already restricted from students. Let me add that in College Heights, many residents have private driveways which are already restricted from the public twenty-four hours, seven days a week. For those residents without driveways or garages, perhaps the city could designate specific parking spaces on the street. This would avoid what must surely be a tremendous expense changing all the signage in the neighborhoods. Even in the block-by-block analysis, the greatest occupancy was seventy-eight percent on Block Seven bounded by College Avenue, Buckner, Colony, and Brent at three PM and on College Ave., where eighty-five percent capacity was observed. The first ordinance, eighteen oh-nine, recommends removal of signs banning student parking because it's discriminatory and according to Doug Fawcett, as quoted in the Freelance Star, "It doesn't send a welcoming message to students." The resident-only parking permits of eighteen dash ten do not send a welcoming message to anyone. It aggravates town-gown relations. I am able to park on campus in a few of the lots adjacent to my building, Combs Hall, but occasionally these lots are full and I need to seek nearby parking. This new plan will hinder my backup parking plan and will invariably make me late for class or meetings on those occasions when I need to seek alternate. The denial of off-campus parking will trigger alternate plans that add about thirty minutes to my original itinerary, something I view as an unwarranted burden. And as been mentioned, there are other people that will need to walk great distances in various weather with various physical conditions. Given that the facts do not document a real problem, I do not understand the need to implement this program. I hope city council will reconsider this proposed ordinance as unnecessary and antagonistic to the university community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fallon.
Madam Mayor, city council members, I'm Brett Schmidt. I live at one-five-one-eight College Avenue. I'm here representing myself as a homeowner with my girlfriend Heather Rigdon. I appreciate Counselor Duffy's phone call back to Heather today. And I also have a professional relationship with the city. I've been working at the Marine Corps Historic Half with the Marine Corps Marathon for the last eleven years. So I thank Doug Fawcett, Chief Nye, Chief Allen, and the mayor for supporting our event in the city every May. So my biggest concern and Heather's concern is the fact that, and a lot of time and effort in the last fifteen months, and appreciate everybody involved in that, but the biggest concern is the fact that the proposed ordinance has two-hour parking between seven AM and seven PM. So both of us have to work and pay taxes in the city when we get home in the evening at five to seven and then want family and friends on weekends. Those are when students and whomever can open par- I'm on the corner of College and Parcell. So I'm basically saying Parcell right now is resident-only, but if you open it up at seven PM in the evening and on weekends, that means family, friends, that we, when we can host, you know, gatherings, whether it's on the deck for grilling out or whatever, we don't really have that benefit because now the students are going to park there Friday night at eighteen-thirty, nineteen-hundred, and they'll be there all weekend and they're not going to move. And also on the, on the blocks of fifteen-hundred and sixteen-hundred College Avenue with the Hill L Center purchasing, Silver's purchasing Hill L Center on fifteen-hundred College Avenue, Gannon and his lovely wife, you know, fifteen-fourteen, the Baptist Center or the Center. We are, and now the Catholics have bought the, across the street on Parcell, that lot has been rented out and they own the semihistoric home that's being tore down shortly here. We are the only single-family privately-owned residence within the fifteen-hundred, sixteen-hundred block of College Avenue. So we have a concern as more and more residents are allowed to be purchased by people that have, you know, the, the ability of financing to take the College Heights community and make them more of a rental community and less of a privately-owned, you know, single-family home residential area. So this, those are our concerns, but we thank the city for really looking hard at this and Doug Fawcett for his, his hard work. And I just want to express our concerns as a, you know, homeowner being an only privately-owned residence within two blocks on College Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
My name is Nabeel Al-Takriti. I work at University of Mary Washington and drive in from South Stafford, basically because I can't afford to live in the city of Fredericksburg and never have been able to afford it. I'd like to second a lot of what Professor Fallon said and simply ask for a clarification before I expand on that. The clarification is, on the June twelfth reading, as I understand it, College Terrace opened up four blocks for longer parking. Is that still accurate behind the back gate of the university?
The proposal for, for College Terrace has not changed since June twelfth and the, the proposal in College Terrace is for all streets who currently have either resident permit parking only or no UMW student parking would be signed two-hour parking Monday to Friday. But there's no, there has been no change since June twelfth. The only change and, and the only activity, so to speak, related to this in the, in the area of the back gate off of Sunken Road to the university is that the, the, the city is acknowledging the university's intent to open that gate Monday through Friday during the daylight hours. So there's been no change on any proposed, there's been no change since June twelfth to the College Terrace proposal.
So it would still be two-hour parking off the back gate on Sunken Road?
There are section, there are blocks of Sunken Road that currently either have resident permit parking only or no UMW student parking. Those will be signed for the two-hour parking.
But there's three blocks that are not signed at all right now.
And they will not, under the current proposal, they will not be signed.
Okay. So while that does address my personal interest, because I do need to park there to get to work, the ones that are currently unsigned, which we had a discussion a, a couple of times, I still would support what Professor Fallon says in general about the university and its role in the community and what this does to the university. I find it a very aggressive move in general to the university and its interests within the community. And the university is facing a lot of challenges right now and really doesn't need yet another challenge in terms of its operational ability in this community. And I'll just leave it at that as a general statement.
Thank you. Is there any, anyone else who would like, yeah?
I'm Michael Casey, twelve-on-six College Avenue, directly across from Combs Hall. I have attended numerous meetings over the past many months of the results of the consultant study, meetings of the Parking Action Committee, College Heights Civic Association meetings, and I'm in awe of all the work that has been put in by the civic associations, by members of council, by Mr. Fawcett, by the police department representatives, by our university representatives. And basically, it's restored my faith in the democratic process, seeing people, so many people with disparate opinions, needs, and desires eventually coming together and compromising, culminating in a unanimous decision, which is before you tonight. You don't see many unanimous decisions these days. So it's, it's very great to see. As far as my personal desires, I'm not going to barrage you with statistics or numbers. I will ask you to go the other direction, step back, and look at this as an opportunity to do the right thing. And by that I mean, take some steps that will help influence behaviors in other people and other groups for the better good of the public. And I'd like to use the HOV, High Occupancy Vehicle Lanes, as an example of that. They are in use in many places. You don't see many of those being repealed. Instead, we see more and more of those being added because frankly, there are not enough traffic lanes that everybody can drive where they want conveniently. And likewise in College Heights and College Terrace, we don't have enough parking that everybody can park where they want, when they want, all the time. It's just the way it is. We're a city. I love living in a city. So those, other legislative bodies had to enact HOV lanes, making some people happy and a lot of people unhappy. In fact, the number of unhappy people in the regular traffic lanes usually exceeds the number of relatively happy people in the HOV lanes. But nonetheless, it is the right thing to do when resources are that constrained. And it has reaped a tremendous benefit, innovative solutions like the slug lanes and carpooling, public transit. But it took that sort of legislation to force behavioral changes for the better, for the public good. So I would urge you to consider that this is the sort of thing that is before you tonight. I do not envy your position, Madam Mayor, members of council, in any way because you cannot make everybody happy tonight. But one way or another, those current no UMW student signs must come down, and I think we all realize that. And to not replace that with a unanimously approved or unanimously recommended solution, which leaves room for revisiting and tweaking, if you will, would be a horrendous shame. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I really came unprepared to speak tonight, but I'm going to have to say something. My name is Georgia Strantz and I live on Sunken Road. And in the paper, there was this tiny little thing that caught my eye. It said that the school was going to open the bottom gate of Sunken Road. And I, you all don't live there, but you don't realize the impact of that small little sentence. About thirteen years ago, I moved there. The gate was open. Many of you don't realize, but Sunken Road reduces to a single lane at the bottom gates. At the beginning, when I lived there, it was like a raceway. This was when the gate was open. It's a short street. Actually, Sunken Road, when it's single, the baby carriages, the joggers, everybody walks their dog. It actually is unlike a street. It's more like a pedestrian mall. It's quiet. It's lovely. And I'm fortunate to have a house there. I find it unbelievable that the college could be given permission by you, city council, to use that street as though it's their own private avenue. The cars come down, they travel fifty miles an hour. You just paved our street. If you were going to do this, you should have at least put speed bumps. There's, it, it's, it's a nightmare when the gate is open. Did they come to you first and ask for permission? Do they have the right to just do this? It goes down to the soccer fields. It's, it makes a curve. Then they come up Franklin, zipping, that's a double. That's even narrower than my street. It is a nightmare idea. The students have no respect for anyone that lives on, I love the students, by the way. I love the college. They're wonderful students, but when they're in their cars, they become like mindless demons and, and they just, you know, spread themselves everywhere in their cars. It's like, it's a Mack truck coming down. These little mufflers they have and so on and so forth, but they don't avoid any speed limits at all. And I understand because the college has less parking now because of their addition to the science building, that they want to encourage the children, the, I don't say children, I used to be a teacher, the students to park down there, which they hate to because they have to walk further to their classrooms. But anyway, I don't know if I've covered everything, how horrified I am by this news, but do you have any rights, do you, do we, to stop this? And is it only, do you realize the immensity of this little teeny sentence, that they're going to open the gate? Delivery trucks, it's just, it is. Do you, did you all give permission or do you have to? Well, how did this happen? It's a city street.
It's access to the garage is the primary.
Right, and it's a shortcut to Route One.
Yeah. We are. This issue has been discussed as probably as much as any single issue. The, the short answer is the university has the right to, to open the gate with or without the city's permission. The, the plan to restrict the opening of the gate to daylight hours or daytime hours Monday through Friday was a compromise negotiated with the university. It's morning to seven, seven-thirty AM to six-fifteen PM, Monday through Friday. Now, if I may elaborate for just a moment, the city has a transportation committee, staff committee, that has representatives of public works, police, planning, all, all the entities that are involved in traffic in the city. And this is very high on their agenda. They've been discussing it and will continue to discuss it. There are enforcement issues. We understand that. The police chief is sitting in the audience tonight and heard your comments. We have pre-opening of the gate traffic counts from when the university was in session and those traffic counts include speed measurements on the, on the, on Sunken Road that we can compare to, assuming this plan goes through at the beginning of, after the beginning of the academic year at Mary Washington this year for a period of time, will take the same types of counts, which will be both volume and speed counts. And so this, this matter was discussed at last night's Parking Advisory Committee meeting. And so it is very much not something that the city has thrown up its hands and says, well, the university can do it and we can't do anything about it. We have negotiated a restriction as opposed to a totally unrestricted twenty-four-seven opening of the gate. And we will be very closely monitoring the, the concerns that you And we will be very closely monitoring the concerns that you have because others have expressed them.
Thank you, Mr. Strantz.
Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to my complaints. And I love you all. You do a great job.
Thank you.
My name is John Neer. I'm at 1718 College Avenue. I'd like to thank the Parking Action Committee and Mr. Fawcett and Council Duffey for all the meetings that they've attended, the evenings that they spent with us, the civic association, and all the time and effort. This has been a 15-month process. The university has not been ignored during that process. When I first started attending meetings, the plans that I were hearing were talking about metered parking on the university's side of College Avenue. They were talking about the residents would have the entire side of College Avenue. But there's been compromises. Now, the university's side is going to be completely unrestricted. There's no meters. There's no time limits for the university on the university's side of College Avenue. And the residential side of College Avenue has made compromises as well. Now, the three-block area closest to the university center is going to have two-hour restricted parking, which would allow the... I think, if I understand it correctly, would allow the people from the university to park there for up to two hours, and residents could get stickers to park longer. So this is a compromise. This is not something that was thrust upon the university. The university attended meetings, and I've been... I was at meetings where the university people were there. And one final point, when this is all done, there probably will be parking that's unused in College Heights. But I don't know how you address that. There's parking that's unused on the campus. There's a huge parking deck, and I've walked through it on a number of occasions, and it's not even half full a lot of times. I'll ride by the Sunshine Laundry on my way to work, the Sunshine Laundry parking lot on my way to work. It's underused. There's parking available. There will be parking available in College Heights. There's parking available on the university. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neer. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? All right, since there is no one, I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the council? Do you have further comments? Council Duffey?
Thank you. Let me try to gather my thoughts here. I first want to thank everyone for weighing in on this issue of parking. Everyone who attended meetings, sent emails, made phone calls, really appreciate it, hearing from everyone's perspective. I guess I'll say a couple of things. One is it's obviously going to be impossible to come up with a plan that would please everyone completely, and that's obvious. But I think in supporting this plan, as I did last time, I want to say that really the chief difficulty we had was the fact that the no UMW signs are going away. And so anyone who parks in the College Heights or College Terrace neighborhoods, it's going to be very hard to allow professors to park on one street or, you know, because now you're talking about thousands of students who could park there, and it would just be overwhelming. And so I think that part of the myth is that if we just allowed more parking for faculty, that they would be able to park there, and then just wouldn't. Students would fill it up. And the fact that there will be some, as Mr. Neer pointed out so well, there will be some empty spaces in front of houses in College Heights and College Terrace, as there will be, and there is, empty parking spaces on campus. So I think that this is a good compromise. I appreciate Mr. Schmidt coming down and kind of explaining that, you know, he wishes that he did have the restriction extended longer, to give him a chance to park in front of his house when he comes back from work. Again, it's hard to meet everyone's needs. And I guess I'll leave it at that for now. But I certainly wholeheartedly support the compromise that we've created. I do regret that many in the college community feel like we're being antagonistic to them. I don't think they appreciate how the challenge of having so many students wanting to park in College Heights, how that affects the neighborhood. It has the feel of a parking lot as people are moving around and trying to get parking. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you. And a big thank you to Mr. Fawcett. He really put a lot of effort into this.
Council Frye?
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. Have a... Let me say, two questions. I guess I'll direct them to Mr. Fawcett. I hear a lot of, you know, complaints or issues coming from the college. Has Mary Washington University... Have they ever considered maybe running a shuttle from the parking lot that would maybe... maybe a constant shuttle that would run, you know, midway at the campus through their circle and back out to help their students and their staff, by any chance?
The answer to that is yes, Mr. Frye. That was discussed early in this process. And as I understand it, and I certainly can't speak for the university, but that's still a possibility. But yes, it was discussed, and they have looked at that. And they've even talked briefly with Fred Transit about the possibility of a partnership there to do that. The big question there is how much it would be used, and it would have to be done kind of on a pilot program basis to see if the number of university faculty, staff, and students that would use it would justify the cost. But yeah, the answer is yes.
Okay. And my second question, I know that it's been said tonight in the word "tweaking" has been used a couple of times, that we will come back and, I guess, well, you know, once this is... if this is set, let me say if. But I was making notes, and thanks to everybody from the public for speaking because, I mean, we do listen. So I've been writing the whole time, so there's been a lot of writing I've been doing. But I did put a star by Mr. Smith's name. How do we address his particular issue? It's a little bit different to me from what I'm hearing. How do we address that in the future, once, you know, or issue like that? How do we address that if this passes? And then Mr. Smith is kind of on an island, in a sense. I mean, on the tweaking process, if I can use that word again.
The proposal from the Parking Advisory Committee, the general recommendations that were made to you from the Parking Advisory Committee prior to June 12th, and the modifications to those recommendations that were made last night, both emphasized that their recommendations are for this program to be implemented for the coming academic year at UMW, and the committee committed to a formal review of the entire situation, beginning as the academic year winds down, and further committed to a report to the council by the 31st of July next year with any... And I apologize, I may have been the first one to use the term tweak, and I now regret that I did. Modifications, adjustments, revisions. It may need more than tweaking. We think of tweaking as being just fine-tuning, and, you know, I would be the first to admit that it may need more than fine-tuning or tweaking, so to speak. And if it does, from my experience working with this group, they will be fully prepared to make those recommendations. As to addressing individual concerns between now and then, it's going to be difficult, although I certainly would not say to Mr. Schmidt, you know, nothing's going to be done between now and then. I would like to see what's proposed in place for the first two or three months of the next academic year before we start doing any type of adjusting or fine-tuning. And some of that can be done administratively and would not have to wait until a formal review after the 2018, 2019 UMW academic year.
I want to say, Mayor, once again, thank you to everybody who came up to speak on it. Mr. Fawcett, thank you for being ready to take these questions, and we're just doing our job, that's all.
Vice Mayor Withers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before we get too far down the road, I assume we're getting ready to vote on this, and I need to make it clear on the parking passes to be issued to the churches. There was split on that. There were several members of the Parking Committee who did not think it was appropriate to issue those passes. I made a motion to accept the recommendations as they stood with the passes, but did not get a second on that. Of course, Dr. Duffy is chair, and I think he would have supported it, but he could not second my motion. So I'm going to support that, I think Dr. Duffy is. But I just want to make it clear that there was some concern, quite a bit of concern, by three of the members of the Parking Committee, that institutional passes should not be issued. So I just want to make that plain to the council, so you'll understand what the recommendations are. They will... For everything as proposed, except for that, so.
Well, despite our reputation as a historic city, we don't write things in stone. So hopefully, and this is certainly done with an intent, as Mr. Fawcett has made clear, of monitoring and continuing to improve the situation as much as we can. I do appreciate enormously the work of this Parking Advisory Committee. It's been an awful lot of work. But it has also been a lot of engagement on the part of the public. I appreciate everybody who came to every meeting and told us what you needed or what you thought, you know, might be helpful. Absolutely and definitely, Mr. Fawcett and Council Duffy for leading the way on a very, very difficult issue. And it is for just about every college town or university town in this state, I can tell you that. Council Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, I do want to thank Council Duffy and Vice Mayor Withers and Doug for all the time and effort and the committee in dealing with an issue that, having served on the College Heights Civic Association way back in the day, we won't say how far back, as Meredith Beck said, this has been an ongoing issue for a long time. To some of the points, because I think it is important, we do address some of the concerns that were expressed this evening. First and foremost is with regards to the university, and somehow we are taking an action against the university. And also to a point that Mr. Strantz made earlier about the opening of the gate. The university is a state institution, and unlike any other developer or any type of development that goes on in the city, who is required to meet parking requirements and everything else when they build, the university is not. So even since I've been here, the university has embarked on an extensive construction campaign on campus, which has eliminated parking in strategic areas of the campus. So I would hope, as this conversation continues, that a little bit of the angst that is being addressed to the city, some questions are asked to the university and university foundation about what their long-term goals are for parking on that university. And now, when they built the new student centers, they're now taking the effort of, well, we want to start renting out our facilities to other users, which is, in a sense, also creating a greater impact on the community, both during the school year and not during the school year. And John Neer made a very good point that I was going to make, is the fact that availability of parking, the university does have available parking. There's nobody's using it. And they would use basically the comment of, "Well, it's too far for me to go if I were to park there." Well, as some of our residents have said, you live in a city, you know, these are some of the things you've got to deal with. The Sunshine Site has been talked about for parking facility. Pizza Hut was specifically purchased for a parking facility for the university. Yet as far as I'm aware, other than adding onto buildings and reducing parking availability on the campus, the university really isn't focusing on this issue too much. And so I would ask those who spoke, who work for the university, that they do at least take some time to talk to the university and the foundation about what their long-term plans are for parking. Because having been here since 1979 and a former student of Mary Washington College, it is an issue. I live on Hanover Street. Trying to even park near my house on a Saturday with a sporting event, I mean, it's almost impossible for me to do. It really is. I mean, I can't even park within three or four blocks of my house on those days because the university built all their sport facilities, the baseball stadium, the fields, and everything else like that, and zero parking, then built an indoor tennis court on top of some of the available parking. And so please have some of this conversation directed towards the university. But, you know, when I look at this, when we started this discussion, I was none too pleased with the whole idea of restricting parking on both sides of College Avenue. And all my time, or putting in parking meters, in all my time in College Heights, nobody ever begrudged the university the use of that parking on the university's side, and I don't think we ever should. As Dr. Duffy pointed out, and has been pointed out, the UMW signs have to come down. We're going back with residential parking zones, which have been there already in a lot of cases for a long time. Other than making some accommodations for the churches, and in the case of the churches, and believe me, I get enough calls about the churches on Sundays and everything else like that about doing things, but they've been there for a long, long time. And to say, "You've got to deal with your parking problem with everything already built out around them," you know, looking for alternatives is not something that we can really... I mean, the reality is, they are there, they are part of this community. We're not going to turn anybody away from going to worship or participating in their churches. And I think for most people in College Heights, that's an understanding. And I think the kind of compromise on that is, you know, giving the two-hour parking around it makes some sense. Give a little, get a little. But to somehow say that, you know, the churches have got to take care of their problems, I think is a tad bit unrealistic in the course of the conversation. But if you really look at it, we're pretty much, pretty much keeping the system we've already had in place intact, other than now you have the option to opt out if you want to. But everything else is pretty much the same. So I get a little surprised when we get all this, oh my God, everything, you know, the sky is falling, when we're really not changing things. I'll use your term, Doug. We're tweaking it a little bit, but the general layout of what's going on is pretty much as close to status quo as we can get it. And to point out, and I wanted to make sure about this, so I asked the vice mayor, when we talked about having available parking on Stafford Avenue, only one side of Stafford Avenue is in this. The other side is still up and running, and everybody can park there. And I would hope walking two or three blocks is not going to be a huge issue with anybody. So I think a lot of the concerns that have been expressed, that I can tell, have been addressed as best as they possibly can. As has been said, as we all know, we're going to run into little bumps in the road here and there. And I have the full faith in Dr. Duffy and Mr. Withers to have to take all those phone calls and emails, you know, to deal with those issues. But I think, I guess I'm just a little bit surprised to the level of response to this in the sense that we're really not making significant changes to the way things are, one. Two, and I look forward to hearing back after the school year. And I think it would be appropriate to come back to the council, the public session. This is what we found out over the last year, and this is what we can change, what we do. And I'm assuming that's what's going to happen today. But I do get a little, I've got to say, a graduate of the university, for the city to constantly be the bad guy in the parking discussion, when the university has to at least acknowledge that had, I won't say, a significant role in creating the current situation to which we're dealing with, and they need to, as part of this continually conversation, come back to the city and talk to their employees and their students and say, you know, "This is what we're going to plan to do to deal with some of these issues." They have the sites. They've been talking about Sunshine Laundry Site. They've been talking about the Pizza Hut site for over a decade. And yet, we're still having and waiting to find out what they're going to do. So I hope we can move forward. I hope we can get this, something on... So I hope we can move forward, I hope we can get this, something on play. We've got to take the UMW signs down, so there's something's got to go in place. What's come up is pretty much as status quo as you can get, and then we see how it works, and then we kind of move on from there. And again, my sympathies both to Dr. Duffy and Mr. Withers in having to go through this a number of times. But I think you've come to a situation where not everybody's happy, and sometimes that turns out to be the best solution. So I thank you for your work, and I plan on supporting the motion.
Mr. Fawcett, you want to say something?
Yes, ma'am. But I'll be glad to defer until all the council discussion. I simply want to make a clarifying statement before the vote.
Sure. Sure, go ahead, because I think.
I would just like to thank Mr. Kelly for his comments. And I do want to minimize the fact that a lot of this no UMW signs, that faculty can park on those streets now. When they become, you know, resident permit parking, they won't be able to. And so it is a hardship for a number of faculty. I also want to emphasize that the parking advisory committee, like Mr. Withers said, they were torn about this idea of giving passes to private institutions for parking. And I think, Mr. Withers and I agree, that we can count on the city staff, the city manager, to approve a judicious use of those and, you know, not give them out willy-nilly. And I think that would be something that would help this parking system work. We already do it to a certain extent for some institutions that are in the neighborhood, and so I think it's appropriate. And so I'm very supportive of this plan. Thank you.
We need a motion.
I would be glad to do that. Where's the language?
And there are actually two separate ordinances, so we have to vote on them separately.
Okay, vote on them separately. I would move approval of ordinance 18-09, second read, repealing restrictions on parking on public streets near the University of Mary Washington campus by UMW commuting and resident students.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes six, zero.
All right, with that, I'd like to move approval of ordinance 18-10, second read, amending the residential permit parking program and establishing resident permit parking zones in the College Heights and College Terrace neighborhoods.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six, zero.
All right. Again, we thank everyone for your participation in this effort, and it is ongoing. Item 5B, Madam Clerk?
C.
What?
Five C.
C?
We did A and B just now.
Thank you. I thought I said C. It is late.
Regulating the placement of mobile garage bins, mobile storage units, and portable toilet encroaching on city streets and sidewalks.
Mr. Fawcett, we're giving you quite a work hard tonight.
Yes. We've gone from honoring a longtime employee to baseball, to parking, and now to dumpsters. So I think we.
I don't know what that.
Rack this up pretty quickly. The proposal before you in for public hearing tonight is a two, kind of a two-pronged proposal. And it has to do with the placement of construction debris or other types of debris containers on public right-of-way, generally called dumpsters. The placement of storage units, pods being the more familiar of the brand names. And in fewer cases, but still occasionally, portable toilets in either the parking lanes or on sidewalks in the city. And this becomes necessary from time to time. Construction debris containers, of course, are needed for renovation projects, either for residents or commercial establishments. New construction often requires this. And the city recognizes that there often is not room on the property on which the construction is being made for these units. So they are legitimate uses. As far as the storage units are concerned, residents use them to move in and move out. Sometimes they're on the streets barely through a weekend. Other times, residents will use them when they're doing renovations on their home. I know we've had at least a couple of recent cases where the residents were refinishing their hardwood floors throughout their home and needed a place to put at least one roomful of furniture at a time as they went through that process. Portable toilets, as I said, are less frequent, and we discourage that. And staff basically says, unless there literally is no other option to put the unit on private property, we will not permit it in the public right-of-way. So there is a system now for regulating that. This ordinance would formalize that system, and it would also establish fees for the use of the public right-of-way for this essentially private use. I'm sorry that we don't have the screen tonight, because I could, is it back? Okay, if it's back, then let's use it. All right. All right, had a few pictures, not as nice as some of the other pictures that we've seen tonight. But there's, the purpose of this one is to show that we do require such things as reflectors on these units. And as you can see, that one has the required reflectors. Sometimes they don't. And that's one of the administrative and management and safety issues that we deal with. Here are, here's the storage units on the street right now in the city. Again, they can be placed, if placed properly, they're out of the flow of traffic, don't really present any safety hazard. There's one that, actually, I went to take another picture today, and it's gone, had been there for quite a while, and now disappeared either yesterday or today. And then sometimes we get them in tandem. This is down Caroline Street, near William Street, where we have a major renovation of a commercial building going on down there. And you have a construction debris container, a dumpster, and a portable toilet on the street at the same time. I hope this is readable. I'll go through it very quickly. This is the proposed fee schedule. I will tell you that although you're having a public hearing tonight on everything related to this, that what's proposed is that you adopt an ordinance and a resolution, and you're only being asked to act on first reading of the ordinance tonight and then second reading of the ordinance and resolution at your next meeting. Very quickly, the proposed fees are for the mobile garbage bins or dumpsters, $100 per month or portion thereof. For portable toilets, $25 for each week or portion thereof. And then the, what happened to my storage units? There's a storage unit. Is it there? It's up top.
Up top.
Very top. Up to seven days, $20, each additional day, $5. There is a provision, although I certainly don't want to start a whole different conversation with this, but there is a provision here that if the city in the future does charge for on-street parking in an area, that the on-street parking fee would also apply. Because effectively, in primarily the downtown, the use of this for a private purpose would take that place, space out of use and would get any potential revenue to the city during that period. So with this fee schedule, if you adopt it, it would apply, and this is put in there for the future, because the discussion about paid parking downtown is ongoing. And then the other, the last item there, and I realize it's a little difficult to see, is to establish a fine for encroachment of putting one of these units on the street without first obtaining a permit. The ordinance says you must file an application and obtain permission before placing it on the street. This doesn't happen, what I would call frequently, but it does happen. And it would be kind of a last resort to have to find someone. But occasionally, someone will put a unit out there and will not be responsive to a contact that says, "Look, you need to..." Usually what we say is, you need to come in and fill out the application after the fact. But very occasionally, that doesn't happen. And so this would give a tool for, an enforcement tool for the city to use in those cases. So the recommendation, and of course you have a public hearing here now, but the recommendation after the public hearing is to pass the ordinance through first reading. Here's the schedule I just gave you. Public hearing and first read of ordinance tonight. A recommendation is that you pass second reading of the ordinance and the fee resolution on July 10. And these documents are written with an effective date, a proposed effective date of September 1, so that we have time to get word out and notify those with whom we deal, which is a relatively small population. The companies that place these construction debris containers is a relatively small group, which we have notified of this proposal. The same with the storage units and the groups that provide portable toilets to construction sites and so forth is an even smaller group. And usually contractors, residents, and so forth work through the company. So that's the audience that needs to be reached to make sure that they understand that these fees, if you adopted them, will apply as of September 1. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor Withers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Fawcett, you talked about downtown pods, like the one that is on the corner of Caroline and William. That's been there for a couple of months. And if, I would hope that maybe we could try to, you know, if we got 12-hour parking meters and it's a dollar an hour, that's $12 a day. That's $360 a year for store down there. I don't know, I'm not sure. I don't want to muddle this, and I'm not going to complain about it, but I would hope we'd take maybe another look at that going forward. That's a pretty hefty fee to add on for that space. That would assume that somebody's going to be parking in that parking space every hour of that day. So I'm hoping we can maybe tweak that a little bit. I'm not going to, I'm going to support this, but I hope we take a better look at that as we go forward.
Thank you.
Any other counsel, Frank?
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. And just to change it up a little bit tonight, Mr. Fawcett, I'm not going to support this one. Just on the strength of, if it was more commercial, I would be in more support of it. I know we haven't had a discussion about it. But if it was based solely on commercial use, or I would support it. But considering the fact that a lot of folks are still adjusting to the fact that they have to pay to go to the dump in different scenarios, it makes it harder on people, on residents. And I've seen now in some cases where folks will kind of just, kind of let stuff pile up, in a sense, and get a dumpster. You know, instead of paying somebody or trying to find a way to get to the dump like they used to. Folks used to, you know, when a neighbor was going to the dump at one time, if you had something, you could throw it on the truck when he went. So a lot of people still dealing with that since we've been charged and to go to the dump. So just basically on the strength of that, I won't support, but I do appreciate your work on that.
Thank you. Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this matter? All right, then the public hearing is closed. What's the will of the council? This is a first read, and as Mr. Fawcett explained, it will come back to us for a second read with an accompanying resolution.
Madam Mayor, I move first read regarding placement of mobile garbage bins, mobile storage units, and portable toilets encroaching on city streets and sidewalks.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes five, one, for our voting against.
Thank you. We now come to the time when we allow folks to sign up before the meeting to speak on any topic that they wish to bring before the council. We have one speaker signed up tonight, Eileen Heim. And while Ms. Heim is approaching, I would like to recognize that we have a scout who's very diligently observing this evening. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm here again today to revisit the main sewer line on Grove Street. My name is Eileen Heim. I reside at 1600 Franklin Street in the College Terrace neighborhood. As previously discussed at a prior council meeting, the College Terrace neighborhood and more specifically residents of Grove and Franklin Streets have been vulnerable to sewer system backups into our homes for years. Recent backups have occurred on April 12, 2017, February 11, 2018, April 4, 2018, and June 3, 2018. We understand that recent smoke test results revealed two locations in the College Heights neighborhood where stormwater infiltrates sewer lines. City sources indicate that in each location, the stormwater infiltration is significant to such an extent that homes in our College Terrace neighborhood remain vulnerable to sewer line backups during heavy rain. The first location that the smoke test identified has storm drains attached and feeding a sewer drain. This location where storm lines feed a sewer line was also identified as such on the city's GIS map. The second point of stormwater infiltration into the sewer system has been identified as to location, but not as to the specific cause. Excavation is needed to further identify the cause and fix. Now that the locations of two infiltration points have been identified, the residents of College Terrace anxiously await further news regarding the city's timeline for repair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heim. And that concludes the speakers that we had signed up to speak for tonight. Council agenda, does anyone wish to add anything to the council agenda? In which case, I will call upon Councilor Ellis for item 7A.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be brief, given the late hour. But I did want to share a few remarks on this being my last city council meeting. And for over the last 10 years, I think I missed two meetings, so it's not too bad. I think we were on vacation or something, but it's been a good run. It's been an honor. It's been an absolute honor, and I'm very grateful for having had the opportunity to serve and to learn a lot about how the city works and have an influence, a little bit of influence anyway, on some pretty impressive projects over the last 10 years. I think we've got a lot done. I won't go into all that. But it's, there's been a lot of changes over the last decade for sure. I've had a lifetime of service, starting when I was 18 years old in the Marine Corps. And, you know, serving our city has made me just as proud as serving our country. So it's been, it's been really good. Thank you to everyone around the horseshoe and previous council members as well. It's been a lot. We've served with Fred Howe, V. Palucci, Ashmal Turner, Tom Zach, George Solly. I think I got them all. And, you know, we've learned a lot while we always didn't agree. Sometimes we vehemently disagreed, whether it was work session or around the horseshoe. You know, we could always go out for a drink afterward, shake hands, and not have any hard feelings about that. And if there was any advice I'd have for Mr. Graham, who I think is out here in the audience, it would be that. You know, just have the ability to debate, sometimes come out on complete opposite ends of the spectrum, but be able to shake hands afterwards and not hold any grudges. I thank you to staff every time. There's never been an instance where I've called on staff for something, whether it was just something personally I wanted to get done or from a constituent, and always responded in a very timely manner. So thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you to everybody that's supported me as well, even those that are not in Ward 1, and appreciate the outreach there. And thank you to my family. I know that you will be happy to have me at home a little more now in the evenings. And when I first came on the council, I didn't have any kids, and I've got two. So it's amazing how time flies, that's for sure. While serving on the city council certainly takes away from time, it takes away from family time, it takes away a lot of family time. And I thank you for those sacrifices. But it's a trade-off in my mind, anyway, obviously, that's worth making, because you get to make an impact on the community that we live in. And I'll just close by saying that I think one of the greatest benefits, to me, anyway, serving on the city council is learning to appreciate those who have an opposing view. And really realizing that when you take the time to listen to those with whom you don't agree, you walk away. agree, you walk away learning something and with a far greater perspective. And that's certainly, I think, the greatest lesson learned from me over the last 10 years. So it's been an absolute pleasure serving with all of you and look forward to seeing you around town.
Well, thank you. Counselor Ellis, we are not going to let you go without your proper thank you, so if you will please come down forward.
Yeah. It has indeed been a pleasure and a privilege, and you said very well that we, I'm very proud of our city council because we have varying opinions, but we always get along and we always talk to each other. So I know that some of your fellow councillors may want to say something, but it's certainly a pleasure to...
Oh, my goodness.
I'm sorry. I forget that the audience listening and watching can't hear us unless we're on the microphone, but Counselor Ellis said it so well, that we have a collegial group who work hard together, fuss over things, and then shake hands and are friends. But we do appreciate your service and just thank your family's grown up with you on the council, and I know the girls will be delighted to see a little more of their dad. Now, everybody gets a plaque, you know, or watch. Well, we wanted to have a plaque that would definitely be seen and looked at regularly, so we have given you a clock with an appreciation of your service to the city of Fredericksburg.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Vice Mayor Withers.
Appropriate to make a comment now?
Absolutely.
Brad, it sure doesn't seem like 10 years ago, after I'd gotten off council, that I'd sit in your living room and listened to a young man talk about wanting to be on council. And you're exactly right. We didn't agree on some things, and we got nose to nose sometimes, but we came out smiling and we learned from each other. And I just want to know that I'm very much appreciative of what you've contributed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Brad, you know, a lot of times, and you've probably heard this a lot, saying, you know, thank you for your service, but that, in a sense, kind of has an ending to it. And I know that may not be on council, but I have no doubt that you will continue your service to this community. And we will be hearing and seeing from you again from time to time, and I expect you to be there to kind of kick us in the, you know what, every now and then when you feel fit. I know how much you enjoy the debate here, and I know you might miss it a little bit, so I just want to invite you back when you have those opportunities. But it's been great working with you. And again, I'm not going to say thank you for your service, because I know frankly your service to this community has not ended, so I'm just going to say good luck, spend some good time with your family, rest a little bit, and I will assume that you will be, as some of us have done before, even though out of office, will still be here, watching what we're doing and making sure, you know, another voice is heard and that the city will be better for it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Frye?
Thank you, Mayor Greenlaw. And Mr. Ellis, I guess I'm lucky I wasn't on the other side of a lot of those debates. Mr. Withers kind of fessed up and said he was, so we'll go with that. But good sitting with you over the last four years and, you know, for the family time and the commitment that it really does take for council, because you don't know when the phone's going to ring. You know, a lot of folks don't know, you know, what goes on, what really goes on. The emails come through and, you know, the phones ringing. It's early morning, it's late night, it's weekends, it doesn't matter. And, you know, it is a big commitment, but, you know, good sitting with you. And I think I adopted your name, so I think your name might pop up.
Yeah, I can't call you Counselor Ellis anymore.
Something about the hair, you know. So I grew a beard, Mr. Ellis. But good sitting with you and, you know, like to see you around, you know, in the future. See you around town and, you know, all around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Duffy?
Thank you. I also want to thank, Mr. Ellis. I certainly learned a lot from you, and I appreciate it. And I especially appreciate how blunt and straightforward you are. And I, you know, it's a skill that I need to work on and appreciate it. And thank you. Thank you for all you've done for the city. Appreciate it.
Alrighty. We're waving goodbye to the girls who are leaving, just so the audience knows what the council's doing up here. Consent agenda, does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'll move the consent agenda submitted.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 6-0.
We have three sets of minutes before us. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Move the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passing 6-0.
We have appointments to the Arts Commission. Madam Clerk, will you explain those?
Yes, the Arts Commission, we have four appointments that need to be made. We have three that are, have reapplied, which is Sophia Constantine, Jay Downey, John McMillan, and then we have four people that are up for, no, four people for consideration, Cunningham, Garmin, Schwartz, Smith, and Zamos.
Alrighty.
So we need a total of four.
So we need a total of four, and we have three serving commissioners who are eligible for reappointment, who have applied for reappointment, if you wish to do so. Why don't you dispol the council?
Counselor Duffy?
Ms. Constantine, Mr. Downey, Mr. McMillan, and Ms. Garmin.
Counselor Ellis?
Ms. Constantine, Mr. Downey, Ms. Garmin, and Andy Smith.
Counselor Frye?
Thank you. Ms. Constantine, Downey, McMillan, and Schwartz.
Counselor Kelly?
Constantine, Downey, McMillan, and Garmin.
Madam Mayor?
Constantine, Downey, McMillan, and Smith.
Counselor Frye?
Thank you. Ms. Constantine, Downey, McMillan, and Schwartz.
Counselor Kelly?
Constantine, Downey, McMillan, and Garmin.
Vice Mayor Withers?
Constantine, Downey, Garmin, and McMillan.
Mayor Greenlaw?
Constantine, Downey, McMillan, and Smith. That sounds like a tight boot. It shows the caliber of people that we have. We have some wonderful applicants here for the Arts Commission, and it's a very strong commission.
So we have six for Constantine, six for Downey, five for McMillan, and four for Garmin.
Alrighty. So, well, thank you, every applicant. Please stay involved and keep your application current with Ms. Lacy, because there are, and there will be opportunities to work with the Arts Commission as well. Thank you. The city manager's agenda, Mr. Barudy?
Madam Mayor, we have one more appointment to make.
Oh.
Ten B.
Madam Mayor, I'll move that we appoint Elizabeth Geis.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 6-0.
That is interesting. I have an old version of the agenda in front of me. Okay, better hang on to this when you write. All right, 11A, the city manager's agenda, the city, yes, which is a resolution approving the comprehensive agreement and design bill contract between the city and W.C. Sprat for the construction of utility improvement process, projects.
May I have the computer, please? I had suspected that we might be late on this, so you're going to get a very abbreviated summary of the presentation that was made to you at the June 12th meeting. And this is the water sewer and storm sewer, private-public deal with W.C. Sprat and Timmons to perform several projects. The projects are summarized here. The Upper Caroline Street sanitary sewer improvements from Ford Street North, just under 1.4 million for that project. The Greenbrier Drive water system improvements of just under $870,000 to improve fire flow as well as domestic water supply in the Greenbrier Drive area off of the Blue and Gray Parkway. The Williams Street storm sewer improvements essentially between the intersection of Williams Street and Sunken Road, down to, down the hill to Kenmore Avenue. The College Terrace water and sanitary sewer improvements of 988,000. And I do want to pause here and ask Dave King to come and give an update on the smoke testing that was referenced earlier, because this plays an integral role in the determination of some of the work that will be done, and we've been asked to give an update on that.
Thank you, Mr. Fossett. Our department has been accused of blowing smoke from time to time. And I can honestly say that during the week of June 11th, our department did blow smoke in the upper College Heights area of our sanitary sewer system. There are essentially two main trunk lines in that area that we have been studying for quite some time and have determined that there was some inflow coming into those lines that eventually worked their way downstream down to the Grove Avenue, Franklin Street area of our system, and has been causing, one of the causes of the backups in that area. So again, during the week of June 11th, we had a company come in to actually blow smoke through our sanitary sewer system. We did find, and we don't have the final report yet, we're anticipating that within the next week or two. But during the smoke testing, we did observe two locations where it appears that we have smoke emanating from some storm drains. Generally, those are at the intersection of Powhatan Street and Stafford Avenue and Augustine Avenue and Thornton Street, where at this moment, we know that those are the locations we want to take a closer look at. We do not know at this point in time exactly what is the issue there, what's the scope of the inflow. Ms. Heim mentioned earlier about that our GIS mapping is indicating that there could be a potential connection in the lines, the storm drain lines and the sanitary sewer lines, but that's not accurate. It's unfortunate, and it's not her fault. It's our GIS system does have some inaccuracies in it, where lines appear to cross and connect, but they really, in real life, don't. So that's the sort of thing that we're sorting through right now, as to what exactly is the problem that we've discovered in these two locations. We do know that there's an issue there, we're going to be looking very closely at that. In the meantime, what we will look at doing, knowing that we do have some problems in those locations, we're going to look at doing some things, such as putting filters in front of storm drain inlets to try to slow down or minimize the flow of storm water into those storm drains. Until we can make corrections to the, whether it's the storm drain line or the sanitary line or both, we're going to try to do some interim steps that will minimize some of the inflow of storm water into that system. So as Mr. Fossett mentioned, in this PPEA project, there is a portion of that project that relates to the College Terrace sanitary sewer system. That work essentially is from Grove Avenue downstream to take a look at, a closer look at the condition of those lines that are in that neighborhood, condition assessment, so to speak, and determine if the size of those lines is appropriate as well. So we kind of have two things going on. The smoke testing is somewhat similar or separate from the PPEA project itself. And what's in the PPEA project is downstream from, essentially from Sunken Road, we'll be looking from the line from Sunken Road down to Kenmore Avenue. So that's what's in the project.
Thank you, Dave. And I would just make a comment before going on, that the way, this is, I think, our fourth PPEA comprehensive agreement with W.C. Sprat for water and sewer. And the agreement, the way the agreement is structured is if we, if a decision is made that we need to take some of the College Terrace sewer money and spend it to make improvements in College Heights to address these issues, because it's having an impact in College Terrace, then the agreement has the flexibility to do that. So that's certainly a possibility. Going on to the last two projects, the National Park Service sanitary sewer replacement, the $305,000 there is for initial permitting, scoping, and initial design. We spoke on June 12th about how that line needs to be replaced. This would not be, this would not get us to construction. It would get us to construction, but none of this money would be for construction. It would be for preparation in the early stages of that. And then the final one is the Lower Caroline Street sanitary sewer improvements, which is from Dixon Street South to the Hughes Home. The total for this contract, including contingencies and allowances of $331,000, is $4,926,385. And I've not given you a detailed schedule there, but the schedule would essentially be from, I know the contractor's eager to get started, so from probably early fall this year through early 2020. So it's about 18 months to do all of these projects. And sometimes more than one of them may be ongoing at the same time, but it'll be about 18 months to get all of these projects completed. And with that, I'll stop and entertain any questions or comments. The action before you is authorizing Mr. Barudy to sign the comprehensive agreement, which is essentially the contract.
Any questions?
I have one.
Yes, Vice Mayor Withers.
It's my understanding that the College Terrace funds is to improve those water lines along, or sewer lines along Grove Avenue if need be, is that?
Yes, sir. We are studying, Timmons, which is the engineering partner of W.C. Sprat, is studying that, what Dave outlined to you. But what Dave also outlined, as far as what's going on up in College Heights, very much could become a part of that as well. And so the goal with the sanitary sewer funds that are identified as being for College Terrace is to address the Grove Avenue and related issues, whether the work itself is physically located within College Terrace or upstream of College Terrace.
So what you're saying, what I'm understanding you're saying is if the problem can be fixed in the College Heights problem, then you won't need to do the blow-in?
I think that's generally correct, but our past experience has been there is no single, when we have an issue like this, there's usually no single fix or improvement you can do. So certainly my anticipation, just based on past experience, is it'll be a combination of addressing the issues that have been found in College Heights and some improvements down closer to, or maybe immediately on Grove, Franklin, and so forth.
So I guess my final question would be, is this enough money to do both if needed?
Maybe.
I'll settle for that.
Madam Mayor, I'll move approving the comprehensive agreement, design bill contract between the city and W.C. Sprat, Inc. for the construction of utility improvement projects.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 6-0.
And now we'll call upon Mr. Barudy for the city manager's update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Because of the late hour, I'll commend to your attention the city manager's update and also wish folks a happy Fourth of July. You can find out more information about the Heritage Festival and all the activities on July 4th in the city at fredericksburgva.gov. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We would be remiss if we did not acknowledge the staff's extra efforts, if you will, or the amount of work and diligence to monitor the flood, to move... And if there's nothing more to come before this body, we are adjourned. Batter up.